I'll call the Newport Beach City Council to order for October 14th, 2008. Can we have the rule call, please?
The record will reflect that all council members are present.
Is there a closed session report from the city attorney?
No, there's nothing to report.
Okay, would you all please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance, followed by, led by Councilwoman Gardner, followed by the invocation of Reverend Robert Ross from the Newport Universalist Society.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, you've given us every good thing we need to do our jobs here tonight, and we thank you for this. To some of us, you've given the experience of being in love so wildly, so desperately, that we were convinced that nothing on earth could stand in the way of our joy with our beloved, and we learned what depths of deep commitment and what driving energy we had. We thank you for this. To some of us, you've given the experience of being alone in a firefight, with comrades at our back whom we could no longer see or hear, and an enemy in front of us who was just as invisible. And you taught us to hold our ground and to do our job, however lost the future might seem. Lord, we thank you for this, too. To some of us, you've given the experience of having a child who did not meet our sweet expectations and hopes, whose flawed nature tested every measure of our strength and purpose. And we learned how to keep faith with shattered hope and not give in nor give up. And we do thank you for this. To some of us, perhaps all of us, you've given the experience of being well-grounded, perfectly reasonable in our grasp of a subject, only to be proven dead wrong by someone we really didn't care to hear from. And you taught us to thank her for her wisdom and to get on with the job. Yes, we thank you for this as well. To all of us, you've given loss, loss of an endless life stretching before us, loss of a reserve of resources that seemed unbounded, of measures of our spirit and mind that we thought limitless, and given us the humility to deal with these. Lord, we thank you for this. Finally, Lord, you've given us one another. We may not all have been on each other's gift list, but we did get one another. And you've taught us how to recognize what is good and true in what they say and do. And we thank you that you've given us work to do with them and kept us harnessed together with them to pursue this good work. Keep your gifts coming to us, Lord. We're stronger for them. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend. Okay, first item on our agenda is presentations. Our first presentation is from the library board.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. My name is Karen Clark, and I'm the vice chair of the Board of Library Trustees. I've been asked to come tonight to just take a couple of minutes of your time and talk to you about the library's relationship with the new city hall. As you know, we've had all of the various buildings and the pictures in the library for the last week or so, and we've looked at them, and we're pretty excited about it and eager to move forward with this project. We just want to remind you and make sure that the trustees and the library staff that our input is sought in this. There's obviously two major areas that we're most concerned about. One is parking, which you probably have all had your head beaten over your heads for many years that we're underparked. And the second is the access, which, as I'm sure you're aware, the various architects have treated totally differently. So, we're here, we want you to, and the city hall committee, to seek our input because we have a lot of ideas, and of course, the librarians have particular interests in how the city hall and the library should interface and interact to be the incredible project that we all hope it will be. So I thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. I can assure you that that will occur.
I'm sure it will.
Okay, our next presentation is the City Clerks Association of California, recognition of Leilani Brown, Assistant City Clerk for her professional achievement.
Good evening. My name is Lucinda Williams. I'm the city clerk with the city of Brea, and I'm also on the board for the City Clerks Association of California, and I'm here tonight in that capacity. The Clerks Association represents about 900 clerks, assistant clerks, deputy city clerks, clerks' office staff all throughout the state. Now, I'm here this evening because it's my distinct honor to recognize your Assistant City Clerk, Leilani Brown. Leilani, I've got to make you come up here, sorry.
You're still going to have to do the minutes of this after you're done.
(laughing) It's all right, I'm a good clerk, I already gave her notes.
There you go.
I'm sure they won't be summarized, though.
Word for word, yeah.
Leilani has attained the Master Municipal Clerk Certification, which is awarded by the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. This designation requires dedication and persistence. It requires completion of a rigorous advanced education tract and significant professional and social contributions. The MMC, as we like to call it, is a very prestigious designation achieved by only about 5% of all international municipal clerks. Leilani has joined a very elite group of clerks in both California and worldwide. In addition to the advanced education requirements for the MMC designation, Leilani has earned a bachelor's degree in public administration, and she's a graduate of the Leadership Tomorrow Program. She has over 15 years of experience in our profession, working for the city of Bellflower and then here in Newport Beach for the last 11 years. She's made significant professional contributions by giving her time to the City Clerks Association of California Nominating Committee and serving on our annual conference committee, and I'm sure there are a lot of other things they didn't include on this list. On behalf of the Clerks Association of California, it is my honor to present Leilani with this certificate of exceptional professional advancement and recognition of earning the highest international professional designation bestowed upon a city clerk, the Master Municipal Clerk Certification. Now, this is a big deal, as you can all probably tell, this is why they asked me to come out here tonight to present it, and I'm just going to very quickly read for you what the certificate says. It is presented in appreciation and recognition of your personal sacrifice and dedication required to attain professional excellence exhibited by achieving Master Municipal Clerk Certification. The Master Municipal Clerk Certification is a lofty goal, demonstrating the highest level of professional competency in public administration. Reaching this prestigious certification increases your ability to serve your community and the master municipal clerk profession. As a master clerk, you are a role model for professional municipal clerks worldwide. Therefore, the City Clerks Association of California with great pleasure does hereby commend and recognize you for this accomplishment. Now, Leilani, congratulations. Being a good clerk, I know I have to talk into the microphone while I look at you. Thank you for your hard work, your dedication, and your professionalism. You're a tribute to California city clerks, the community of Newport Beach, and the city clerks throughout the world. And don't make me cry.[589.20][589.20](laughing) City council, thank you, and you, for recognizing the importance of the Master Municipal Clerk designation and giving her the time and resources to achieve this goal. We're very proud of you, Leilani. Great job, we know you've worked really hard and deserve this recognition.[605.04][605.04](applause)
Congratulations, Leilani. I think that we probably need to promote you to city clerk next month.[617.16][617.16](laughing)
My congratulations, too, Leilani. Okay, our next presentation is the presentation of the Helen Putnam Award from the League of California Cities.
Good evening, Mayor Selich, council members, residents. My name is Tony, I'm here on behalf of the League of California Cities. In 1975, a woman by the name of Helen Putnam served as president of the League of California Cities. She was the mayor of Petaluma, eventually becoming the board supervisor in Sonoma County. As a professional, she was a teacher and eventually became the principal of the school she taught in. Mrs. Helen Putnam defined excellence. She strived to achieve her best in everything she did, both in her profession and her public service. In 1982, in honor of her memory, the League of California Cities established the Helen Putnam Awards Program. The purpose of the program is to recognize the achievement of cities across the state of California in improving their lives and addressing the needs of their local community. In 2006, your city embarked on a great endeavor as to replace a large number of city facilities in a short number of years. In order to achieve success, your city identified two important criterion. One was community involvement in the planning process, and two was a funding program, a funding plan, long-term funding plan, and a specific timeframe. The result was a master facilities replacement program. It geographically displays the parameters of the program, and it's updated every year, and it's included in the budget process. Under the leadership, the staff leadership of Dennis Tanner and Dick Kurth, several city facilities were replaced: the new city hall, the Oasis Senior Center, the West Point Community Center, and five out of the seven fire stations in the city. Now, only 12 Helen Putnam Awards were given out to the 479 cities across this great state. In recognition of your city's efforts to improve the quality of life for its residents by replacing these critical city facilities, Mayor Selich, I'm honored to present to you the Helen Putnam Award under the category of internal administration.
Okay, I'm going to ask Councilman Curry to come down and accept that, since he's been the primary motivator behind this program for us. Also, Dennis, why don't we have you come up and get in this photo, because you guys put a lot of work into this, too.
After all, you only did it.[798.48][798.48](laughing)
That plaque has more gold than the state has, I can tell you that.
You know, we should also give credit to, we had a citizens finance committee a couple years ago that Councilman Curry was on before he got on the city council that worked very hard on putting this program together, so our thanks goes out to that committee as well.
Ed, if I may?
Yes, go ahead, Keith.
Well, first of all, I would thank you for those comments, and I would thank the League of Cities for this recognition, because this facilities financing plan was put together over several months with a citizens committee led by Chairman Steve Freitas, who worked very diligently on solving and addressing a lot of the issues that the city must confront as it thinks about replacing a significant amount of its facilities over, really, a 15-year period going forward. And if I could ask Dennis to come forward, too, because just to help the public understand a little bit about what the facilities plan does, because there's a lot of misunderstanding, I think, in the community today, and I wanted to sort of really point out the fact of what the plan shows in terms of the fiscal health and stability of the city. First of all, Dennis, congratulations, because the staff has done a tremendous job in making this award possible, because of the great work and the great analytics that have been applied to it by your staff. The most recent version of the plan that was shown at the city's workshop in February indicated $250 million of debt, but is that really the amount of debt the city's planning to issue, or is that sort of more like a placeholder in terms of looking at the overall capital projects?
Mayor and council members, that's exactly right. That is a placeholder. That was the staff's estimate of the cost of replacing all those facilities that were listed on that spreadsheet in today's dollars. And we used the fire station number seven as a template for square footage construction costs of those various facilities, but that is not, that was not meant to represent the total debt financing that we had undertaken, but simply the cost of those projects.
And so, for example, when I look at the first bond financing that's on there at $89 million, in fact, the first financing, because of our success with development fees, is likely to be close to, what, $30 million or something like that? Isn't that sort of where we are?
That's also correct. If you look at the first series of projects, and those are by no means prioritized by city staff, that will be the council's discretion, but the best example I can give you of that is the first project that we're undertaking is the Oasis Senior Center, and as you know, there's a tremendous fundraising process that went on for that facility. The last numbers I saw was $20 million for construction costs. Of that amount, $10 million has been raised through development fees or donations, contributions, and so if the city decides to issue debt for that facility, it'd be in the neighborhood of $10 million.
Right. And so, when you think about how that plan works, we were very successful in getting these $50 million of developer fees. If we are similarly successful with other projects down the line, what is the effect of that success on the debt program? Does that reduce the debt that's going to be issued in the future?
Certainly. I hesitate to give a number, because then I'll be held to that number, but any development fees that we receive from the Irvine Company for Newport Center, from the Hyde Hotel for their condominium project, I mean, their timeshare project, anything that we receive in that regard will certainly go to reduce that debt figure significantly.
And then, a lot of people sort of focus on the cost of the projects or the amount of debt, but what's really the most important line on that entire chart in terms of how it impacts the city and its ability to take on these projects and also manage our ongoing operations?
The most important thing, and that was really, I think, the emphasis of the, why the league chose to recognize us, is we've developed a level pay plan, a level debt service plan, where the city will make annual contributions to a facilities replacement fund, no matter what the debt service requirement is for that particular bond issue or COP issue, that the city will begin making a $6.7 million general fund contribution, and that number will grow by 2.5% a year, no matter what the budget does. It's designed never to go over 4.32% of the total general fund appropriations, and in fact, after about seven or eight years, it gets down below 4%.
So what the real role of the plan is, is that it's an affordability measure that shows us and shows the taxpayers that we can, in fact, undertake these projects and do it within a very small band of capacity within our budget.
That's correct. And we looked at other cities, surrounding cities, you know, some have a lot of debt, some have very little. The average, we looked at Costa Mesa, Anaheim, Garden Grove, Irvine, Huntington Beach, Fullerton, et cetera, Mission Viejo, the average is 4.26%. And so, we're starting at 4.32%, we think that's very doable, but again, it will fall below 4% in very short order.
Well, I want to congratulate staff again for a job well done, as recognized by the League of Cities with this award. It's a very prestigious award and certainly well-deserved, and I think you should be commended for the conservative planning that goes into that plan and the forward thinking that it shows in terms of how we're able to take care of our facility needs. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and again, I have to give, I have to give credit to staff, Steve Batum's people, and of course, Dick Kurth was very instrumental in designing the original worksheet and plugging in the numbers, so they get the credit.
Congratulations, Dennis. Fantastic accomplishment. As mentioned by the league, it was the only city given an award in the internal administration category, so a very prestigious Helen Putnam Award, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Okay, we have one final presentation that's not on the agenda. Yesterday, we had a serious conflagration in the city that wasn't for the valiant efforts of our fire department could have turned into an extremely, much more serious situation than it was, and we've recently been discussing fire and brush clearance ordinance in Buck Gully and Morning Canyon, and I have invited the fire chief to make a presentation to us on that fire, the impacts and the outcome of it, because I think maybe it's a wake-up call to all of us to the potential danger that we face in the city, so Chief Lewis?
While he's tuning up, I do see a unfamiliar face out in the audience, and the hearing on the Buck Gully ordinance is going to be continued, so you might not want to stay.
Mr. Mayor, while this presentation is coming up, I'd just like to let council know that yesterday I was going to a meeting with you, as a matter of fact, near the airport, and when I came out of city hall about 4:15 and saw the smoke bloom, I knew there was a fire, but the seriousness of it was really impactful on seeing the smoke, and I went to the incident command post and spent some time with our police and fire people and watching all of the coordination, not only between our folks, but also the other agencies that responded, and it was very impressive.
Thank you. Good thing we did better yesterday than we did with me doing that right now, so. No, it really was, for me as the chief, it's one of those times where you actually see the collaboration that was taking place out there, those scenes, and actually, I was in the general vicinity when it came down, I started smelling the smoke, not knowing what was going on at the time, and so I was actually there with the first arriving units, and it was kind of like old times for me, it's been a long time to get out of the chair, and all of a sudden, the adrenaline was flowing for me, and it's a very dynamic situation out there. It's a little tough, we had people evacuating, and you're trying to go in, it's a little dangerous time, making sure we get our units in there and get them where they need to be, because the fire is taking off and it's impinging on the homes, but it was a phenomenal effort by everybody with all the agencies that were out there, and it was very nice. So, just to let you know, we had 1.50 engines out there, we had three helicopters, two from Orange County Fire Authority, our PD Eagle. We had probably about 10 throughout the time, 10 crews that were hand crews that we had working down in the canyon. I'll just show you, if I can make this work, yeah. This is the reservoir right here, this is the 73, this is Bonita Canyon, this is Ford. The fire started right probably down in there and ran up. The wind was driving, it was a wind-driven fire, there was fuel there also, so this is pretty much where it took place, right in here, and these are just some shots from down in the canyon, there were units, I didn't have a whole lot of shot, I'll get some more coming from the photographers, because I wouldn't want my people just taking photos of everything, they were working, but there were some that were taken by, I think, the PIO that was down in those areas, but this is the area that's coming up near the homes. It was, it was doing a lot of impinging, not a real good focus, but this is the road that comes through, and I go back to this thing, it was that for us, our mission was to make sure that we held the fire in here and didn't let it jump the road, and then we're going to make a stand up here, because we didn't want to get past, and it could run this, you know, possibly, so we were going to make a stand and put all of our units up here. In the meantime, it's hitting all of these homes right in here, but we had to make sure that we held this.
So you were lucky to have a road you worked around on.
Having a road was nice, because otherwise, it would have ran both sides. This is Aberdeen, Port Aberdeen Road, that's where the one home was actually being impinged upon, we, this is right after the command unit was around scene, we actually got it fixed up with a lot more stuff going on, but they're, they're working right out of the back of their vehicle right now, and that person was nice enough to let us use their driveway.
So that's the incident command post?
That was the incident command post right then, and then we actually started bringing other units and people in. We called for airstrikes, they were already on high alert for a red flag, so they were more than happy to get moving, and they were making drops, and as you know, the reservoir is right there, and within minutes, they're just bam, bam, and for two hours, they make solid drops on the whole fire. And that was quite impressive, and then Eagle was working there, and then Eagle went up above to actually act as a strategic command, making sure they coordinated all the pilots and everything was going on below. This was the one home that took it, and we had two structures, and that was pretty much it. This was one, and pretty much the embers blew in to the side of the house, and this is what, it really wasn't that bad. There was some damage to the house, but nothing inside, and this is on the other side of it, on the canyon side that came right up to the house, as you can see. So this was the back of it, and this is the most damage we had on the home there. Most all the other ones, the guys were anchored in and did a good job, the fuel came right up to here, so this was a little tougher to deal with.
So it was important to have some side yard setbacks for you to get through on that one?
It was important, and had just been cleared out two months ago, so, yeah.[1500.72][1500.72](laughing) And the next photos, you'll see, we made a stand up here. I will tell you that with the wind blowing, there were some embers that went from here unbeknownst to us over into this neighborhood.
The thing that didn't get them on.
And the helicopter pilot was up, along with one of our, Captain Todd Knip, and he happened to look over his shoulder, and a Nepali, I believe, this is Nepali, he saw a house roof start to take off, and so they were trying to direct units from back over here into there. Didn't feel like they had enough time, so the helicopters actually made a drop right onto the house, which they normally do not do, but he said, you know, I'm going to take that chance, and he dropped on them, and the other one dropped on it, and then we finally got some units over there. So there was some, some roof damage. This is the slope, from the top of that, that was probably about two blocks.
A thousand feet or a bit less than a thousand feet?
It's probably more than a thousand feet, those are some pretty big streets up there. So this is from looking down at the canyon up to those homes at the very top. These are the homes at the top, and this is where we made our stand, and the guys did a good job of holding it right here, because you can see there's units down there, and that's where we were holding that road the whole time during the whole event. This is up at the top. This is that home showing some fire, this is as the roof got taking off, that's the home on Aberdeen. As you can see, the fire did get in the attic, and the guys got in there and had to get in the attic and put it out, but the gentleman was very lucky, and I spoke to him today, and he was very, very appreciative that we saw it from the air and took care of it. Most of what we're doing was with hand crews right down, you know, on the fence lines, making sure that we held our stand there, working through the fences, that was pretty much it. We were there all through the night, we had units there all through the night, and probably right now, we're releasing some, we want to make sure there's no embers in there. The wind hasn't kicked back up, we were pretty fortunate, so it was a pretty good, a pretty good stop. As far as their leader, I'm pretty proud of everything, and actually being firsthand, getting to see it done was amazing, and was kind of very proud of the guys. And the homeowners, I think, were very appreciative, because they know how close it came to them, and everybody was working real, real quickly.
It looks like that those slopes didn't have a whole lot of trees on it, it was just mainly brushes. I know there were several stands of eucalyptus in there.
Yeah, there was some eucalyptus in there, but there was, there was things that were down below that had been cleared out in the previous month, so it wasn't as bad as it could have been.
What, did you have, I mean, was the eucalyptus grove in there a primary source of burnable material in there? Is that?
A few of them went up, but the helicopters, they were making those two-hour stops, they just kept hitting the trees, hitting the trees, because most of it was hitting the trees and filtering down, trying to get down below, so those trees were soaked with the helicopters. And I would say, we're still working on the cause, we have some leads, there's some people of interest we're speaking with, but at this point, we don't have anything conclusive.
Chief, can you talk just a little bit about the coordination between the police and fires, what the police did and what the fire did then?
Correct. I was going to mention, our PD was great, they came in and realized, and people were self-evacuating, but when I first arrived, it was pretty crazy, everybody just running everywhere, but the PD got a handle on it, they set their command post up near us, and they just started systematically going through the streets and asking, making people leave from the areas that were, the flame was impinging on all those streets, and started moving people out, and I think they moved them over to Anderson School with the Red Cross being over there, and then at one point, they started allowing them to walk back into their homes. We did, we, streets were all tied up with equipment, so we didn't want them driving, but they did a great job of moving everybody out and then getting everybody back in, and it worked real well.
Chief, can you summarize how many total pieces of equipment and agencies were involved in just this one effort here?
There was probably eight agencies. We had 50 engines at one point.
Five zero, 50 engines.
Fifty engines. So we had a number of strike teams that we were working with, I was going to say battling with, because I get along real well with Chip, but we were working real well with Orange County Fire Authority, but they were trying to get their units released, and we wouldn't relinquish them, because they had, they were in staging in Orange County, they were heading out to Porter Ranch, and we just said, no, we need them over here. So they're over here, but they were trying to get them over there, so we held on to them as long as we could, but we had a number of their units, which worked out real well. And I think that it'll come up as an agenda item, I think, Leilani, one thing that, we talked with the county, and they said, what you probably need to do is, when it comes to an agenda item, if someone would make a proposal to make it a local declaration for disasters, the reasoning behind that, they said, is that if there's any costs that are incurred, that we're going to have to incur with any of that we're going to have to incur with any of these agencies that we kept all night, as the governor makes a declaration of a state edict on these fires, then if we have made a, and filled this out and have those names on there, we can then be able to be reimbursed if need be. If we don't do this, if there's things that need to be reimbursed, we will not get it if we have not declared a declaration of a disaster. It doesn't mean we're going to get anything, but it'd be for sure that we won't if we have not done this. So it's important upon us to make sure that we do this. And then I'm going to, they said, the governor's asking for any of them to come in now. And they said, if you get it on my desk by tomorrow morning, we'll be okay. So we're going to try to get that accomplished tonight if it's possible.
Okay, Robin?
The request would be, this would be an item, I think clearly from the facts described and what happened. This just happened last night, for the council to first take action to add this emergency declaration resolution to the agenda as something that came up after the agenda was posted. And then after that vote, then the council could vote and consider the resolution and approve that tonight.
I'd honor that motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I second it.
Okay, please vote.
Motion carries.
On this, yeah.
You're just adding it to the agenda.
We're just adding it.
To the agenda. That's all I have.
Can I make a couple?
I think Councilman Curry wants to make a few comments first.
Well, as you were moving down the map there with your pointer, Chief, you were just about to get to my house. So I wanted to congratulate, first of all, the police department, who did a great job at evacuating my family and my neighbors in Harbor Ridge and the entire neighborhood. I also want to thank your office, who kept me informed right from the beginning in terms of the circumstances and facts of the situation, so I was able to pass on viable information to people in the community who were concerned about it. I did have the opportunity later in the evening to visit with some of the fire units that had been dispatched from Costa Mesa, Santa Ana, Orange, and Huntington Beach, who were at the Pavilion's Market staging area, and expressed to them personally my gratitude for their involvement with our city. It was truly great to see, Chief, your department coordinate this event, and the great, quick job that you did in knocking this fire down. And you all should be very proud. Animal control was on the scene, helping people evacuate their pets, which, by the way, I will just tell you now from personal experience, is the most difficult part of organizing any kind of rapid evacuation from your home. And just the police department coordinating with the other departments in terms of the evacuation and sealing off and coordinating the neighborhood, I think our public safety personnel should be very, very proud. I know I'm very proud of you for the great job that you all did in this fire.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, thank you, Chief. With the council's indulgence, I'd like to add this to the agenda at this time. And I'll entertain a motion on this item.
So move.
So good.
Okay, does anyone from the public want to comment on this emergency resolution? Okay, seeing no one, bring it back to council. Please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
Notice to the public, the city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the council. Speakers must limit comments to five minutes on agenda items. The council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones and pagers off or set them in the silent mode. Now is the time for city council announcements or matters which council members would like placed on a future agenda for discussion, action, or report.
Councilwoman Gardner?
Yes, in the last few months, several new clothing stores have opened in the village of Cronomar. So if you haven't shopped Cronomar lately, I invite you to come and look at the new dress stores, as well as enjoy our wonderful restaurants, Cronomar Village.
Councilman Curry?
On Saturday, I had the opportunity to participate with both Chief Lewis and Chief Klein in Public Safety Week, which is ironic, because one of the things that I thought was the most interesting exhibit there was the helicopter with the water drop bucket attached to it, which we used the very next day. And when you see all of these pieces of equipment that we have, and how they were ultimately then deployed literally 24 hours later, or 48 hours later, it shows you really what a professional police and fire operation, lifeguards, paramedics that we have in Newport Beach. I was very, very proud to see the skills that were displayed, and I think the community was very proud to see them displayed as well. And I congratulate all of our public safety personnel for that.
Councilman Webb?
Yes, I participated this last weekend in a birthday party. And this may be a little bit hard for some people to believe, but this was celebrating 125 years of Methodist ministry in the Newport Beach area. And it was at the Christ Church by the Sea, which is the Methodist church down on the peninsula. And they have had Methodist circuit riders began in 1883 to bring the ministry to the Newport area. And they've had a continuous service since then, and they had a very good party. And we, actually, we gave them a proclamation that was signed by two mayors, the real mayor and then the centennial mayor. So I had a good time there.
Did you know that First Circuit Rider?
No, he was my uncle.
Councilman Hen?
I do have a few things to note here. As I'm sure our residents know, the city council has been working extremely hard to deal with the group homes issue. It's been frustrating along the way. We've been doing everything we can to make a difference there. Of course, we're working as hard as we can to see to it that our own ordinances are structured in as aggressive a way as they possibly can to deal with this. But beyond that, another aspect of this effort is a lobbying effort. And we've made several strides in that respect in the last few weeks. I appeared at the League of Cities Convention a week or so ago and made a presentation to a fairly well-attended group, actually, of cities, discussing, along with Dave DeBerry, the city attorney of Orange, the group homes issue, and trying to generate more consensus and understanding amongst our fellow cities about this. In addition to that, the league passed a resolution at the conclusion of its business, and, well, although there are a lot of lengthy "whereas's," the resolves aren't so long, and I'll read them. Resolved by the General Assembly of the League of Cities of California, assembled at the annual conference in Long Beach on September 27, that the league will pursue an aggressive and comprehensive program to restore the ability of California cities to reasonably regulate sober living homes, and be it further resolved that this program shall include, but not be limited to, seeking damages in state and federal, excuse me, seeking changes in state and federal legislation, providing a clear definition of what constitutes a sober living home, and the preparation of model ordinances concerning the regulation of such uses. This is a very good example, I think, of success in starting to generate the critical mass amongst other cities that we hope will catch the attention in Sacramento that we most certainly need to have on this issue. And lastly, we did catch some attention in Sacramento on this issue, if only on the governor's desk. Senate Bill 992, the Wiggins bill, was passed by both houses of the legislature and was a bill that would have had potentially seriously adverse effects on Newport Beach. And the city of Newport Beach wrote a letter to the governor, asking the governor to veto that bill. And in fact, he did. And in fact, afterwards, we were told that our effort in that respect made a difference in the governor's decision. So we are working as hard as we can on all fronts to deal with this issue. And I'm happy to report that we're having at least some amount of progress on all fronts. We're looking forward to that to continue.
Councilman Rosansky?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of announcements. The first is, I'd like to invite the public to a ribbon-cutting ceremony that we're having at the Newport Theater Arts Center on Sunday, this coming Sunday, October 19. It's going to start at 4:00 and go to 6:00 PM. The address is 2501 Cliff Drive. And many of you may not realize, but we do actually have an arts center, a theater. It's a very small theater here in Newport Beach. I know there's some that would like to have a much larger theater, and we're working on that. But in any event, we've done a nice little expansion there and improved the whole look of the place. And so anybody who has some free time between 4:00 and 6:00 on Sunday, please come down and see, you know, what the new theater looks like. On another couple of notes, actually for our next meeting, I have discussed this with the city manager, but I'll just mention it here. I'd like for our city financial staff to give a report on our investment portfolio. You know, a lot of people have been opening their statements from Merrill Lynch and other places, and it's not looking too pretty. You know, from what I understand, our finances are in very good shape, and I'd like to have a report on that so that the rest of the residents can know that as well. In addition, another matter has come to my attention through some of the residents in my district in West Newport. Another little-known fact that some of the residents may not realize is that we have, the city has oil wells that we own in West Newport, and that provide a significant amount of revenue, especially when oil hit $150 a barrel. In any event, the oil is pumped from, under the residences of some of the property owners there. Approximately 200 received royalty payments. But apparently, city hasn't been keeping up with who the owner of the mineral rights are. And so the checks have been going to former owners, and the new owners are not getting their money. And so I would like to see some type of report on, you know, what the status of the royalty payments are. And I'd like to initiate some type of action by the staff to maybe examine the list, make sure that we're paying the right people the money that they're entitled to. One gentleman in particular I spoke with purchased his home in 1982, and he hasn't gotten a royalty payment since he's lived there. And so, you know, over the years, it's probably accumulated into a significant amount of money that the former owners was cashing the checks. So hopefully, we can weed out those situations and get the money where it belongs. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Dagel?
Yes, I wanted to acknowledge Councilmember Hen's participation in the League of Cities Conference. I went to the conference, and certainly Councilmember Hen is recognized in the state of California as someone who's able to speak with authority and experience on the group home issue, and probably the most serious social issue to confront our community in a very long time. What I wanted to report on is the annual California Coastal Cleanup Day. It was a record-breaking amount of debris that was picked up, almost a million pounds. And that's with 80% of the cleanup sites reporting. Our local site was the Back Bay. And volunteers picked up 814,154 pounds of trash, and an additional 132,277 pounds of recyclable materials, for a total of 946,431 pounds, with 90% of the cleanup sites reporting. So a phenomenal amount of trash, a record amount of volunteers as well. So either volunteerism is growing, or awareness about the debris that is coming into our watershed is out there. So thank you.
Thank you. I just have one thing to announce, and that is that I had the honor on Sunday evening to attend a reception at the Bell Boy Yacht Club and present a proclamation to the city declaring Sunday Nick Scandon Day. For those of you that don't know who Nick Scandon is, he's a gentleman that has contracted Lou Gehrig's disease and went on to participate in the Paralympics in China and won a gold medal. And his story is extremely inspirational. He's really a role model for all of us in how we handle the difficulties and the challenges we face in our lives. And it was truly an honor for me to be there and present that proclamation to him, and see his gold medal, and see all of his friends and compatriots that were there to honor him. So it was...
Was it sailing a boat?
Sailing, well, excuse me. It was in sailing a boat, a Bell Boy Yacht Club. I figured, everyone would figure out it was in sailing. Do you know the exact class, Don? I don't.
It's one that's been specially put together for those with handicaps. And Nick is in a wheelchair and has very little motion. And it's interesting to see the pictures of the way he and his crew member could operate the boat. And he was so successful that he didn't even have to sail the last two races in order to win the gold medal.
Truly amazing. Madam Clerk?
Consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar, items 1 through 22, are considered by the council to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The city council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion, unless members of the council, staff, or the public request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss a consent calendar item should come forward to the lectern upon invitation by the mayor, state their name and item number. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium.
Councilman Hen?
I have nothing.
Councilman Rosansky?
Nothing, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Dagel?
None to pull, but I did want to comment on number three. That's our city manager's newsletter. And we're going to be having a contract with a new vendor for the printing and mailing and formatting it. And our new contract, there's a cost savings that I would report. And I wanted to highlight that as an example of thrift, kind of an old-fashioned word and an old-fashioned concept, but even more relevant in today's turbulent economic times. And I also wanted to highlight that that cost savings initiative came out of the staff. So look forward to more, and thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Gardner?
Number 20.
Number 20. Councilman Curry?
No items.
Councilman Webb?
No.
I have none. Staff, do you have any items to pull?
I have none.
Okay, does anyone from the public wish to pull anything off the consent calendar? Step forward, please.
I have to step forward.
Just come up to the podium. Okay, thank you.
Just a minute.
Yes.
You might want to just quickly comment on, I lost it, sorry, on the MOU with Costa Mesa that we're going to approve tonight, item 12, just so you can look at the public though, that we're...
Okay.
That meeting occurred between Costa Mesa and ourselves since the last...
You want to go ahead?
Oh, is it out of order?
No, that's fine.
Okay. I thought maybe you planned something else.
Item number 12 is to, for the city council to approve the same memorandum of understanding, which we call an MOU, between the city of Newport Beach and the city of Costa Mesa. This MOU was approved at the joint meeting that took place at Costa Mesa approximately two weeks ago. And based upon a conversation with the city attorney, who said that there might be some question as to whether the city council can enter into a contractual agreement of any kind outside their jurisdiction. But I'd put this on the consent calendar without any change in wording, just to make sure that that would not be a problem for us. And basically, what it does is just make Costa Mesa a equal partner in the John Wayne Airport issues. They would participate financially as far as studies and expenses that we both agreed to. And I think it shows the determination not only of Costa Mesa, but Newport Beach to try and form as strong a front as we possibly can, and hopefully in the future include other cities in this type of agreement, because we all have the same thing in common, and that is to protect our communities and basically, and also protect the county from a John Wayne Airport that is too impinging upon our communities.
Councilman Webb?
One clarification, that we're equal partners on John Wayne issues, however, that does not necessarily mean that they are an equal party in our settlement agreements, because those are separate legal documents, I believe. Is that correct?
Oh, that's true. The first settlement agreement, the parties entered into that in 1985, and the amended agreement took place in 2003. So those parties would not change. And Costa Mesa understands that. It is basically that the city of Newport Beach and Costa Mesa had previously approved principles of understanding relating to how both cities felt about John Wayne and about wanting to prevent its expansion. And this was just a documentation of that, that we would work jointly on key issues in order to make that happen.
Thank you. Councilman Rosansky?
I'll just make one more announcement that is going to be covered by these consent calendar items. Item 17, we will not be having our regular meeting the second Tuesday of the month, because it's Veterans Day. So the meeting is going to be pushed by that action item to Wednesday, November 12. So don't show up on the 11th. We won't be here.
Okay, thank you for that. Anyone else have an item to pull from the consent calendar? Okay, motion on the consent calendar?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, make a motion. Yes, Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve items 1 to 22. We're going to pull items 15 and 20, and on item 5, we don't need to pull the item, but we're going to fold in the schedule for the project into the contract.
I'll second that.
Okay.
That also includes the emergency declaration consent calendar item.
We'll include that.
To include in consent.
Well, we already voted on that.
We already voted on that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Councilmember Rosansky? Motion carries.
Okay. First item that was pulled is item 15, the McFadden Square Centennial Monument Completion and Acceptance. Mr. Swalstad?
Bernie Swalstad, Colonel Omar, Chairman of the McFadden Square Project. Emmett Berkery is gone now on leave, and I requested the city keep me informed on what's going on in this project, and I didn't know about this, so I'm not being kept informed, which I think it's your advantage to keep me informed, because there's a lot more money to be made out there. The only point on this is that I assume that you all know there's going to be some additional costs a little bit for the repainting of some engraving, which could affect this contract, but I think the city's decided not to pursue it. But Cold Springs, I think, had some responsibility for giving some of the engraved stones without the proper paint in the proper condition. But I think talking to Emmett and that, the city decided to forego that, so you're going to have to spend some money on that a little bit in the future. That's my assumption by putting this on without any further discussion regarding that matter. Is that my understanding, I assume?
I see Mr. Batum shaking his head yes, so...
I believe we have a plan.
Okay. And it keeps the contractor in Cold Springs without responsibility, so... The other points that I think everybody should be aware of is that we're trying to do a few other things out there, and that has to do with trying to have this engraving and the blackening of the errors that were made originally, and that's in a process that's very slow so far, and we're working on doing that, so it looks a lot better out there. We have this local engraver that's going to go out there, and we've got, I think, another $25,000 in the last few weeks, month or so, and they'll be engraving, putting further engraving out there. Still trying to get a logo to go out there, so if the staff can help me, if the staff can't help me, I'm going to have to have the engraver spend four or five hours doing a logo to put it out there. So I need to get a decision from the city that we are going to have him do it or not. I'd like to have you, if you could, assign me a representative so that I know who to work with when Emmett's gone.
That'd be our city engineer, David Webb.
Okay, David Webb, okay. So if you could put him on the loop with me and vice versa. I am, we have had some concern over the ballards that were put in there, that they're the right ones, and so on and so forth, and I think we're still analyzing that, so I'll work with David in regard to that. The history, we're going to have to keep this updated, so the history, the last two years, probably after the first year, should be engraved in there, because it goes to two of six, so I think that's, would be something we should do. I'm working with Ray Price. Ray has, I've asked him to give us some cost studies. There's 11 tree benches around there that are atrocious and look very bad, and to put bench tops on top of there is $13,000, and to put tile around them, he estimates to be another, up to maybe $30,000, $40,000. So I think this can be raised out there, and that would be the next continuing project that I would propose to the city council in the near future. I think that this budget is, I think we brought in more than being $24,000 short, so I don't think that's a correct figure, but I'll try to work with Jana and the city treasurer, somebody on that. I think that we brought in closer to the $589,000. And it says that the $50,000 is from the Centennial Budget. Reason why that's from the Centennial Budget is because we had to put in all the representations that the Centennial made to the sponsors, and we couldn't get any donations from Irvine Company and a lot of big donors, so that's why that $50,000 was put in there to take care of the responsibility for the city to have the sponsors that were sold before we got involved in the project. So, anyway, I think those are the main items, and I promised to bring in all the money, and I brought it in.
Thanks, Bernie.
I'd like to thank you, Bernie, for the wonderful job you did on that, and, because I think that without the driving force that you provided to that project, it might not have happened. So thanks again for all the effort and work that you've done on that.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Move the action.
Second.
Okay, please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, next item is item number 20, Coast Highway Relinquishment Letter Requesting Initiation. Councilwoman Gardner?
Yes, when I was reading this, I came across the line, because the concern about the condition of the bridge over the Back Bay, because of, sorry, because of the concern about the condition of the bridge over the Back Bay Channel, staff recommends additional inspection. And when I read that, of course, I thought, well, I'm going to start driving around the Back Bay, I guess, and when, it, it study session was clarified, so I'd like staff to clarify that.
Yeah, Mayor and Councilmember Gardner and council. Yeah, the clarification is that in pursuing investigating the relinquishment, we want to be very careful to have Caltrans thoroughly inspect that bridge, and so we know exactly the condition of it, so we know what we're getting into if we accept possession of that bridge.
But at this point, we have no concerns.
We have no concerns, yes.
We have no big cracks that we're looking at or anything.
We know there's some...
People can drive over it.
That's true. We know there's some basic maintenance that needs to get done, but nothing to be worried about.
So move the action.
Okay. Any public comment? Seeing none, please vote. Okay, next item is oral reports from city council on committee activities. Councilwoman Gardner?
The Green Task Force met, and we got our first draft of an ordinance, and we were very fortunate in having Jay Elvatar, our building director, building department director, come and clarify some things for us, so he's going to be working with us to revise it and make it more real-world, perhaps, than my draft was. And we also had a good meeting with traffic staff. We've been, I've been concerned about the way we notify people of lane closures and that sort of thing, and we came up with some very good ideas, so I think our residents will be more informed and be able to make those adjustments to their driving when we have any sort of lane closures.
Okay, Councilman Curry?
No items.
Councilman Webb?
No.
Councilman Hen?
I think I basically gave the report on the ad hoc committee on group homes.
Okay. Councilman Rosansky?
None, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Dagel?
None, thank you.
Okay, and I have none. Okay, our first public hearing tonight is item number 23, Award of Non-Exclusive Solid Waste Collection Franchise to GB Services Incorporated.
I think Mr. Harmon is here someplace in the background. Here he comes.
I was talking to Bernie about replacement benches at McFadden, so he left that out. We're still working on the accident damage.
And they're going to be replaced when?
They're ordered October 7th, and it'll take about four to five weeks, so mid-November, hopefully, it will look like it did before the accident. We hope. Staff is recommending that we award a non-exclusive collection franchise to GB Services. They have completed all of the requirements, and if council approves the franchise agreement tonight, they will become our 27th commercial hauler in the city of Newport Beach. Again, they've, they've met the requirements, they are part, staff checked, they're part of the poll program for the California Highway Patrol, which means their trucks and their personnel are checked regularly by the Highway Patrol, so we're recommending approval. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Is there ever a point where you get too many of these franchises running at the same time?
About 20 ago, I think. Actually, it's a very, a very interesting question, a good question. 27 is a lot of haulers. We do not have a limit in Newport Beach. As you can imagine, it takes a considerable amount of effort tracking the 27 haulers, but Andrea Riles in my office does a great job doing that. We have about, of the 27, we have about four major haulers, which is Ware, Waste Management, Rainbow Disposal, and I forget the fourth one, but they're the large haulers that do most of your grocery stores, your commercial bins. The rest of them are your construction demolition haulers. They're, people are doing remodels to their homes, the bins, and the temporary rentals, so that's what makes up the 27. But yeah, it's, it's an effort to keep track of all of them.
Any other questions, Mark? Okay, thank you. Anyone from the public want to comment? Seeing no one, bring it back for action.
Move the action. Second.
Okay, please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, I just want to make it clear, I see some folks in the audience, that item number 22, the amendment to the fire code, has been continued.
Mayor, could I ask, is anybody here for the polystyrene? I'm wondering if we might not hear that before the CUP here, the appeal, because that appeal is going to be a while, and I don't think that our other ordinance is going to take so long.
Okay. Is that okay with the rest of the council? Move that up? Okay, all right, well, we'll move around the agenda a little bit. We're now going to go to item number 27, Continued Business. It's eliminating the use of expanded polystyrene disposable food service ware within Newport Beach's corporate limits.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Katie Bowden, Economic Development Coordinator. At your June 10th meeting, city council directed staff to draft an ordinance banning the use of styrofoam food service ware within the corporate limits of Newport Beach. At your September 23rd study session, staff presented a draft ordinance and a report. The attached ordinance includes the provisions, which council directed staff to include in that ordinance. A six-month phase-in period will be allotted to restaurants to make the switch from styrofoam to an alternative packaging material, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, any questions? Councilwoman Gardner?
I would just note that we all got a letter from Heal the Bay today supporting this, and at the same time, in today's LA Times was the obituary of Dorothy Green, who established Heal the Bay, and was so active, and just someone who showed that you can, you can make a difference, any individual can, with enough determination. So this would certainly, if we pass it tonight, would be a nice memorial.
Okay, very well said. Any other questions of staff? Thank you, Katie.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wish to address the council on this issue? Please step forward.
Counsel persons, I'm Don Peterson, 2:49 evening Canyon Road, and I came for Buck Gully, I didn't come for the styrene, but I feel it's my obligation, because basically, I've been manufacturing expanded polystyrene and propylene and polyethylene for the last, since 1962, so I think I know a little bit about it. My, my problem is the banning of something like a polystyrene, which is very efficient and effective for, basically, insulation, seems a little abrupt, because what do you have to take its place? And we're saying that it's a, it's environmentally not sound material. Well, if you replace it with paper, paper is basically, you have to coat the paper in order to have it waterproof, and if you coat the paper, it can't be recyclable. Polystyrene is completely recyclable, so a little fallacy there. I'd like to correct a young lady, and she basically calls it styrofoam. Styrofoam is a Dow Chemical trade name, which basically is an extruded material years and years ago that first came out, and then now the other materials are expanded polystyrene, which are made of bees and molded into the, into the different products. You know, if someone is going to throw away a product, they're going to throw it away, whether it's paper or, or a polystyrene. And so consequently, I think it's more a case of trying to educate people into doing the right thing, as we've done in many years ago. I can remember the roads were littered with trash, and finally, we had an ordinance and certainly, what is it, a $500 fine? And surprisingly enough, our roads became a lot cleaner. Maybe, maybe the case here is probably to take a look and, and take advantage of the situation more than anything else. I've had several emails and brochures in the last several years of people coming out with recyclable machines, compactors, actually, they, they'll, you'll take and throw your material in there, it compacts it from a density, your density probably, the styrenes are anywhere from one to two-pound density per cubic foot. It compacts it to a density of probably about 20 pounds per cubic foot, so reduces the area quite a bit. That is now sold, and we've been selling it for years and years, and the going rate has been in the 25, 30 cents. I'm seeing up to 40 or 50 cents a pound. You know, what can you sell for $500 a ton in a recyclable material these days? I mean, that seems to be a situation where it could be more effective to collect it and, you know, and take advantage of the marketplace. I just, again, I'm not Ford, I don't mold cups, and I don't mold food service, we're basically in industrial products, but I, I just feel that there's, there's something missing here between a band and what are we going to replace it with, and is it better? I mean, naturally, if you throw a styrene cup into the water, it's not going to sink because it's so light and not absorbent. You throw cups or paper into there, actually, it does, after a while, sink, because it decomposes, and all of those basic materials that they've used in making that cup, chemicals, as in in our waterworks. So I, I can't quite understand that. As I say, we've had plants in, in California for years, and my gosh, we were collecting in the neighborhood of two, three million pounds a year of, of scrap from, from consumer products. A lot of that we process, because we can reprocess it right into our molding again, and probably, you know, using a 10%, you know, product mix. The rest of it, we would sell, and now, there, there's a great demand, they're making park benches, which you might be interested in, because they're non-destructible. They're making lumber, and this is the biggest boom dunk of all, because lumber that they're using on decks, I mean, it lasts forever. So the product line that's coming out of this is just tremendous, so I just think that we might reconsider. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gardner?
I would just note some, some information, because first of all, we are not eliminating all polystyrene. In fact, we had a very interesting presentation about someone who recycled it, and we asked General Services to, to speak with him about that. We are doing it for some products, but roughly 80% of marine debris originates from land-based sources, and plastic make up 90% of the floating marine debris, and that's from the U.S. Department of Commerce. So plastic does contribute a much greater segment than some of these others.
Hi, my name's Suzanne Roberts, 3420 Bealito. I didn't come here for this particular thing, but, because I didn't know it was on the agenda, but what I was just going to say is, there's a restaurant right around the corner here, Bear Flag Fish, that just opened up, and they had a plastic cup that I went to use, and it wasn't plastic at all, it was made out of corn syrup material or corn something. And that's the kind of thing that I think that is really exciting. We can't ignore some of these problems in the past by saying, what are we going to do it? Change it with... Change it with, by making it illegal or making that ordinance, you have people coming forth with new ideas that are going to be better than the past, and I think we need to have a change, and Newport Beach certainly should take heed of how many, how much trash was picked up, and I've picked up my share around here, and unfortunately, I think your comments were really good about, it's not everywhere, but it's just somewhere, and let's make a difference. So I thought that was really interesting, and I love the fact that this company right around the corner found an alternative that will disintegrate, but held your water or whatever, so.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members, I'm Scott Morland, representing Newport Harbor High School. Thank you for listening to us and having this measure in front of you. Polystyrene does not biodegrade, as we've talked about before in here. Most polystyrenes are not recyclable, they break down to very small pieces that cannot be picked up efficiently on the beaches. You folks were talking about the numbers and the amounts that were picked up when you do beach cleanups in front of your home the last time we were here. It also passes on carcinogenic toxins into our foods, whether it's hot or cold. It's a huge problem. There are viable alternatives now in paper, cornstarch, bamboo, sugarcane products, there's viable alternatives now. Other cities are passing this measure. Please do the right thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak to the council on this?
Can I request something?
No, thanks anyway. Okay, come forward. No, you get five minutes, I didn't mean to be flippant. Yes, you did. Did you hear the little bell? Go ahead.
Hi, my name's Ayana Holmes, I'm one of the parents of two of the students at Newport Harbor. They're all feeling a little reluctant to come up, because they've spoken so much, and they don't want to take more time, but I just wanted to voice my opinion, and thank you all for considering this. I think it's very important, I think we have so much pollution, and we have such a convenience-based society that wants things quicker and easier, and we're not looking forward to the future of the effect of our convenience at this moment, and I do think there are other alternatives that the kids have presented and that we've seen, so I just wanted to speak for the kids, because they're feeling nervous about coming up, and they've been fighting for this for a long time, and it would be great to have the next generation being, looking forward to the future, they have a little different perspective, I think it's really important. So I just thank you for considering us.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no one else, I'll bring it back to the council for motion.
First of all, I'd just like to thank the Restaurant Association, because they have really come through on this. We were asking, thinking about a year, and they said they could do it in even shorter time, they really supported this, and that says something about our community and our commitment to improving the environment. I would move the action.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Other than to prospectively thank my fellow council members personally.
For taking up in front of your house.
For helping me out with this.
You're welcome.
Ed, yes? I would just like to congratulate the students, who have been dogged about bringing this issue to the City Council now for at least a couple of years that I've been on the City Council, and it is your perseverance that has brought this moment here today, and you should feel very, very proud for what you've been able to accomplish. You know, it's not often that National Trade Associations based in Washington send somebody out to lobby the City Council, but they did on this issue, and you should know that you beat them. So I congratulate the students for your effectiveness and for your perseverance.
Okay.
Just, just one comment to Councilman Hens' comment, I think there's only one City Council member that doesn't have some sort of waterfrontage that's impacted by the styrofoam, so it's not just you, it's really all the citizens of Newport and all of our districts, except for one.
Keep it out of the reservoir.
You'll have to forgive me if, if there aren't days where it seems like it all lands on the beach in front of my house, so.
You should go up to the upper bit.
All right, let's, let's vote.
Motion carries.
We are a water community.
Okay, thank you, students. All right, we're going to go back to our regular agenda, for those of you that are following along on the blue agenda sheet, we're going back to public hearings, item number twenty-four, this is Adoption of Local Hazards Mitigation Plan, LHMP, for the city of Newport Beach, and General Plan Amendment Number two thousand eight dash oh-six for the safety element.
I thought, I saw Chief Lewis back there. Oh, are you giving it?
No.
Oh, here it goes.
I'd just like to announce again that the Buck Gully Fire Ordinance is going to be continued, because I see another face out there.
Okay, Chief, you're up.
I'm up. Other than it's up, I, you know, I actually thought, I apologize, I thought planning was going to take the lead on the, but I'm sure I can answer anything that needs to take place with the.
Okay, well, let's, let's put it this way, does anyone on the council have a question as chief or the staff on the local hazards mitigation plan?
It is a part of the safety element with the, with the general plan.
Okay, so it's, is it online, if people wanted to look at it, or?
I don't believe.
You mean this particular staff report?
No, 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 the, the report.
Amendment to the general plan.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so the amendment to the general plan's on the city's website.
It is, and Mr. Mayor, I think the way it's been explained to me is this hazard mitigation plan, if adopted by the City Council and made a part of our general plan, will allow us to obtain a higher level of reimbursement, should we have a.
Correct. I will say that in the future, if we have any disasters, in fact, the federal government will not reimburse if we, one of the conditions they have upon us is that we actually do have a hazard mitigation plan that's in the general plan, and if you don't, then you don't, you won't be able to access those funds.
And that reminds me of what I did want to ask, we have a plan, it's a printed plan, but suppose we haven't implemented the plan, does that then undercut our ability to get the higher percentage?
And I think, I think if you, in the proposal there, is that, the last part, portion of that was that we don't necessarily have to implement everything that's there, in fact, we're waiting on, I think the, one aspect of it said that we will look for grants, mitigation grant funding, that would take care of some of the things that we see as possible things that need to be addressed. That was one of the things that you would have within your power to, once it's signed, we will look for those opportunities to take care of those things, but we're not necessarily handcuffed into taking, having to take care of all of them.
Okay, any other questions, the staff?
Move the item.
Okay, does anyone from the public want to comment on this? Okay, seeing no one, I'll bring it back. Councilman Webb, did you have something? Okay, okay, please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, next public hearing is item number twenty-five, it's the Sejour European Bistro and Lounge Appeal, thirty-four hundred Vialito, revocation of use permit numbers two thousand one dash oh-oh-five and two thousand two dash oh-three-four.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Rosalyn Ng, I'm associate planner for the Planning Department. The item before you tonight is an appeal of the Planning Commission decision. This is a lengthy process of the Planning Commission with revocation process, and staff has requested assistance of Ms. June Allen, she's a special counsel representing staff, and I would like to introduce her tonight. She will give the council a brief staff report in term of the summary of the case actions and the Planning Commission's actions also. And for the public record, I'd like to mention that a copy of the lease agreement between the property owner, which is the Overstreet, and the former tenant, which is Sejour, has been forwarded to the City Council tonight, and that is separate from the original package, and the appellant has a copy of that also. With that, I would like to turn that over to Ms. June Allen.
It's the one that says Felt Body Centers LLC on it?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, my name is June Allen, I'm an attorney with the law firm of El Charro and Winder, and I am acting as your city prosecutor on this matter. First, what I'd like to do is make it clear what it is that the Planning Commission did here. There was a use permit issued for thirty-four hundred Lido Avenue in two thousand one, it was amended in two thousand two, and while the Planning Commission recently considered revoking that use permit, the use permit in fact was not revoked, it was modified, and as modified, it still allows alcohol uses. In effect, what the modification did is turn back a page so that the use permit that is in effect now is more like the use permit that was originally issued in two thousand one. I'd also like to comment on the lease that Ms. Ng just mentioned, that's an item that was inadvertently omitted from your staff report, it was before the Planning Commission, it was provided to the Planning Commission by the Overstreets, under cover of a letter dated January tenth, two thousand eight. The really significant event in the history of all of this, I think, is actually the amendment of the use permit in two thousand two, and I think in some ways, the most important pages in your staff report are pages one oh-six to one thirteen, and those are actually the minutes of the Planning Commission hearing on the amendment of the use permit in two thousand two. The reason those minutes are important is that those minutes show what it was that the Overstreets had in mind in requesting the amendment to the use permit in two thousand two, and what the Planning Commission's intent was, and what their understanding was of what it is the Overstreets wanted. Because the issue here is whether what was supposed to be at this location was an off-sale wine business and a wine bar that did wine tastings, or whether it was supposed to be a full-bore restaurant eating establishment, eating and drinking establishment, or a bar. The Overstreets came in in two thousand two and said, we have this wine bar business, we have, we do these wine tastings, we'd like someone who comes along with someone else to a wine tasting, who maybe wants to have a glass of Scotch to be able to have a glass of Scotch. It wasn't intended to be a restaurant, and the Planning Commission made it very clear in its comments that their concept was, this location was not going to be a restaurant, it wasn't going to be a bar. And the representations that the Overstreets made at the time reflect that that was also their understanding of what was going to be happening. We have representations that the food is complimentary to the wine sampling and creates an atmosphere that isn't a restaurant or a bar, but an experience of fine wines. The project is educational and retail, as well with sampling of unique items, which is a more sophisticated venue than what, what would be the norm. So it was never really intended to be a restaurant or a bar. Now, one thing I'm sure you will hear from the Overstreets attorney is that there is language in the permit that's contradictory and inconsistent, and I can't disagree with that statement, there is conflicting language. But I think that the source of that conflicting language is what the Overstreets were attempting to do. They wanted to have a type forty-seven license at this location, not really operating a restaurant, and I think that, that that's reflected in the inconsistencies in the permit. The difficulty is that the Overstreets went on to take advantage of the inconsistencies in the permit when they entered into the lease that was provided to you as a supplement to the staff report, because what that lease says is that the permitted use is to be, and this is right in paragraph one of the lease, a bar, restaurant, and live entertainment business, or a medical professional practice. The issue with the medical professional practice is that the property is underparked for that use, and the bar, restaurant, and live entertainment business was not what, what the Planning Commission intended, or what the Overstreets represented to the Planning Commission in two thousand two, was the type of business that they were going to have at that location. Looking at the issues that the Overstreets have raised, will raise tonight, about the Planning Commission's action, in light of that lease, all of their arguments fall apart. Their argument is, they didn't have notice of what was going on at the property, and in fact, in the Planning Commission resolution, most of the items that are identified as violations of the use permit are actions that were taken by the tenant. The Overstreets are trying to say, we didn't know what the tenant was doing, you can't hold us responsible for what the tenant was doing. And there are cases that say that a landlord can't be held responsible for what the tenant is doing if the lease provides for a lawful use of the property. And the problem here, and the reason the Overstreets' argument falls apart, is that what the lease provides for is not a lawful use of the property. And, and that same issue comes up over and over again in looking at the other issues that the Overstreets have raised. I, I can go on and address the Overstreets' issues, if the council would like me to at this point, but it might be more appropriate for the council to hear from the Overstreets on that with an opportunity for me to respond. I don't want to try to make their arguments for them and be accused of misrepresenting their arguments.
Are there any questions at this time?
Well, I do have one question I'd like to hear you elaborate on, and that's the issue of due process. That was raised by the Overstreets.
Well, that's, that's a, that's a rather broad subject. It, it appears that when the, the Stocktons, who operated Sejour, were cited for various violations, that the Overstreets were not specifically given notice of those violations. They learned about them, in effect, through the grapevine, they were notified of some violations later, as the process went on. However, with regard to whether they were on notice of whether the lease they had entered into authorized an unlawful use, a use that was not consistent with the, the use permit, I don't see a notice issue there, because they were present at the two thousand two Planning Commission meeting, they know what representations they made to the Planning Commission, they know what the Planning Commission's response was. And while they apparently gave the use permit to the Stocktons, there's nothing in the record indicating that they ever gave the Stocktons the minutes of that Planning Commission meeting, so that the Stocktons could have a better understanding of what that use permit provided.
So you're saying the requirement to notify them that there were problems is trumped by the fact that there was an underlying lease?
They authorized.
That was not appropriate?
They authorized an unlawful use of the property, and they were aware of that. Thank you.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor Silec, and council persons, I'm Dennis Overstreet, and I am the landlord of thirty-four hundred Vialito. I'd like to give just a real quick, brief introduction of myself, and open any questions that you would like to ask of me. First of all, I've been in the fine wine and spirits business, on sale and off sale, for over thirty-eight years. I've had several operations, I have three books on wine, and two thousand and six, we revoked our Beverly Hills operation, the most unique and best operation, five-star in the United States by ninety thousand members. We have a unique operation, and our business model has always been going to a certain niche, which we applied here when we opened up in Newport Beach. That niche is for a more mature forty-five-year-old-plus audience. We have always kind of operated on the premise that luxury is an absolute necessity. At this point in my life, I think that I'd rather have the luxuries than the necessities. Our idea of, our business model has always been sort of different. We are not just a merchant, we provide background music, that is Cole Porter, Gershwin, something that is timeless and something that's very special. Our idea of teaching people about enjoying the very luxuries, or, as I presented our case before the City Council and the Planning Commission before, a twenty-five-year-old Scotch, a fifty-year-old cognac, a rare Bordeaux, these are very, very special experiences, and this is something that. And this is something that you should be able to gulp to an environment that is totally unique, where that you can purchase and you can consume. Now, when I made this very same what I'm saying now, I said before, "If you look in those minutes, you will see a complete menu that was provided to the Planning Commission." A complete menu, if you look through there. And at the time, the discussion was, "This is a very unique operation. There's no question about it. We are a totally unique operation. We provide something to a very unique audience, an audience that is looking for luxuries." And that luxury might be along with a fine champagne, might be caviar, would be certainly small, different gourmet plates. That menu was provided, contrary to what was said. Now, the discussion, that you look into those minutes, you'll see that the discussion, "Why don't we call this a restaurant?" Rather than ancillary. And when Patty Temple was the Planning Commissioner at the time, she came forth with the argument that this is more akin to like a food court. It's a large area, we will divide the facility into A1 and A2. A1 part will be for retail, A2 will be for the consumption of distilled spirits, wines, and foods that are required by law, by the ABC, that you can't just serve alcoholic beverages without food. So as Shakespeare would say, you know, describe the action, the word for the action and the action for the word. You want to call it a restaurant, you want to call it a food court, whatever. When this lease was drawn up, I did not draw up the lease. I went to Tyler Paul Mary, a large law firm, in which they drew up the lease. Conversations with them, they said that they will defend their interpretation, that when it said that it was authorizing a full menu, when there are six other points in the conditional use permit, calling it a restaurant, then call it what you want to. The entire premises was not supposed to be a restaurant, bar, or tavern. Only a portion was so. As far as our operation, what I would like to kind of bring you up to speed, it was very disappointing to have a tenant come along, that would turn out to be a rogue tenant, that did not do the things that they were supposed to. We were never notified-
Mr. Overstreet?
Yes.
Do you have other people that are going to speak on this?
My attorney and my wife. I've got to step aside.
Okay, yeah.
But I'll be available to answer any questions, because the comment was that I somehow might have misrepresented, or I intentionally did something. I would like to make that very clear.
Could I just ask one question?
Okay, Mr. Overstreet, there's one question from the council.
You've answered, I mean, as far as there was a menu, I've looked at it.
Yes.
So whether it's a restaurant or just the food is ancillary. But the lease does talk about a bar.
Yes.
And I think in all the discussions that I read, as far as the minutes going back, it was always very clear that there was not to be a bar. Whether you, we can quibble about whether it's a restaurant, the food is ancillary, but I think that we were clear on a bar, but what is your interpretation of that?
Okay, Ms. Gardner. We also, there is, and you'll see, we presented to the Planning Commission at the time, it cost us several hundreds of thousands of dollars to build out a bar, to list the bar, and be approved by the Planning Commission. You'll see those drawings. It has the exact seating at the bar, it has seating throughout the A2 section, saying where people are supposed to sit and be served alcoholic beverages. My lawyer will address the more legalese aspects. But believe me, with all my heart, I have done, I've been in this business, I have a fine reputation. We've never deceived anyone. We've been very forthright with what our intentions were, and I've continued to operate the very same type of operation in Beverly Hills. I hope that answered your question.
Good evening. My name is Chris Thomas. I'm with Bremer White Brown in Omira, here in Newport Beach. And I represent Chris and Dennis Overstreet. I just want to make a few comments. I'm going to try to stick pretty much to just about seven points that I think are important that have to do with the legal aspect of this. But I did want to comment on council's statement about this situation. It's true that the lease does say "bar" and "restaurant," it's true. But you need to look at the minutes very closely, because the minutes reveal that the two people that were involved in this, the Stocktons, both Carolyn and Arthur Stockton, were attorneys at law, both of them. And both of them were given the use permits that govern this 3400 Vialito, both of them. And this lease references in paragraph one, Article one, and also in Article nine, those use permits. And it talks about what they need to do if they want to get them changed. That's very significant, because these use permits were not given to unsophisticated people. My point is that both Mr. and Mrs. Stockton, they knew that it was the use permits that governed the operation of this facility, not the lease. They knew that they had to operate according to what the city told them they could do. And that's very important, that it's never been brought up, but that's accurate, and those are the facts. Okay, now, I'd just like to make, I know you only gave me five minutes, so I'd just like to make seven quick points. And these are significant. And I gave copies of these to staff, and I also gave them to council members. Can we get that one portion off of there?
Sorry.
Okay. Okay. The Overstreets, they operated this without any issues with the city of Newport Beach under both those use permits for three and a half years. And the planning department knew that, the city council knew that. Three and a half years, not one single citation. There is no evidence that the city ever cited them for anything, operating under either use permit. Sejour was a tenant from October 2005 to December 2008. The Overstreets had no financial interest in what Sejour did. It was strictly a landlord-tenant relationship. Okay, condition six in both of those use permits, it restricts the power of the city to revoke its grant of, and there's a typo in here, I apologize for that, the grant of the use permit, it restricts it to take it away except for public nuisances. So in other words, this use permit had a remedy in it. It wasn't just if you violate it, it was if it was against the public welfare, created a nuisance. Now, why is that significant? Because at the time of these revocation hearings, Sejour no longer existed. The nuisance was abated in December of 2007. So there was no reason whatsoever, with the nuisance abated, to proceed against Mr. and Mrs. Overstreet to take this vested right away. None. The tenant was gone, the offending tenant was gone, and not coming back. And he admitted that at the hearing. And he also admitted that none of this had anything to do with the Overstreets. He took full responsibility for violating these use permits. Next. And this is, this is quick. The Overstreets, there was no notice to them whatsoever of this. There's conjecture, there's hearsay, comments, like the Overstreets drove by the property, so they must have known what was going on. Where is there a letter from the planning department? Where is there a note of a telephone call? The planning department had known them for three and a half years. Where is the message? Where is the letter telling them, "Your tenant is having problems. Your tenant is violating these use permits. Do something about it. We just want to let you know, because you have a vested interest." Not a shred of evidence. So, go back. Okay. Now, the reason I cited that is because that's in our brief. The law provides that such notice should be given, and that they should be given an opportunity to correct those problems. That never happened here. And there's no good explanation for why it never happened. Next. The Newport Beach Municipal Code Section 1050040 requires written notice, the violations should be given to the owner, and that time be provided for corrections. Never happened. The city knew that the Overstreets owned this property. There's no record they were ever given any written notice. Next.
Okay, you can, you can continue on and use Mrs. Overstreet's times, or-
I don't think that's enough.
Okay. I'm just about done.
Okay.
So, next point is, the Overstreets, as landlords, this is a legal principle, they're not responsible for Sejour's actions or operations, which resulted in violations. If those violations were caused by the tenant, and in this case, Mr. Stockton in the minutes has admitted he caused those violations. Now, that's just a legal principle, that they're not responsible. They weren't complicit in what he did. And the reason they weren't complicit was because both Mr. and Mrs. Stockton were sophisticated. They were lawyers, they knew how to read a use permit. They knew that the use permit, not the lease, governed the situation. Again, there was no reason to revoke these use permits, because there was no nuisance to abate. Mr. Stockton left in December of 2007. All these hearings occurred months after he left. There was no need, because the nuisance had already abated. Next. Okay, finally, the Gold Hill case, well-known case, Gold Hill Tavern against the city of Costa Mesa, was talked about at these hearings. The Overstreets admittedly, or admitted by the city attorney, had a vested right in these use permits. They incurred material expense, they spent hundreds of thousands of dollars to improve that property, to make it into the establishment that they did. So taking away those rights is unfair. It's a violation of their due process rights, violation of what the city should be doing here, because this is a judicial issue, as to whether or not they should lose these use permits. And we learned that from the Gold Hill Tavern case, which was decided, I didn't put the citation in there, was decided in 1992. So based upon that, I would request that the city council do the right thing here, do the fair thing, and not punish the Overstreets for something they had nothing to do with. And rescind and reverse the city Planning Commission's decision. Thank you.
I have one question for you. How much money did the Overstreets spend in going from the first use permit to the second use permit? Because it's my understanding, all or most of the money was spent on the first use permit, which is what we're going back to. So how much incremental money was spent?
I need Mrs. Overstreet, or Mr. Overstreet to address that.
Approximately $200,000 in furnishings and such done when we decorated it and did the bar, as you have pictures of.
Okay, so $200,000 for the second use permit?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mrs. Overstreet, I'll give you three minutes.
Thank you. I'm Christine Overstreet, and I live in Newport Beach, and I'm one of the owners of 3400 Vialito. And thank you for this opportunity of the appeal. I know you're busy, and it's been a very informative engendron, and I feel privileged to be here, part of it. I'm gonna, sorry, I'm a little nervous here. I'm going to skip my first couple of slides, because Mr. Thomas pretty much already touched on the subjects, and I don't want to be repetitive. There's a huge stack of evidence that's been provided to you, council members, and it's this thick, and it's such a shame. And I feel that, I want to just say one main thing, and that is, regardless of what the decision is here tonight, I really hope that the city, as well as ourselves as land use owners and use permit users, that if a circumstance occurs like this in the future, that there really is an effort to mitigate the problem in an efficient way. Mr. Stockton and Mrs. Stockton carried on, from what I can see from the reports and the minutes and the, you know, the police and the city, for seven months without consequence. Sejour has not had to defend this case. We have. We have spent over $65,000 in legal fees trying to defend this use permit. And we did not violate these conditions. Sejour did, the Stocktons. And they left us empty-handed with the building that's been vacant for over 10 months, and we were not given proper notice. They are gone. We were responsible use permit users, and we did not, I really do resent the comment that we unlawfully generated a lease that was in unlawful use of our use permit, because that is not true. The Stocktons came to us to have an endomology spa, to remove cellulite, and it was called Svelte. And that was the main purpose of that lease. And how it got rewritten after he, the two attorneys, rewrote it so many times, that's my mistake and my husband's mistake, and next time I'll write my own lease. But anyway, the only other thing I'd like to bring up is condition 13. We really do believe that condition 13 in our second use permit is contradictory, and that, that condition, I need my lights going off, is misleading, and then it talks about the fact that our unit wasn't an eating and drinking establishment, and it really meant it was A1. A1 was retail, A2 was, and we spent a lot of money on this plan. Where is it? That floor plan was approved in 2002 by the Planning Commission. And A, I don't know if I can use this. Oh, shoot, I'm sorry. I'll forget. Anyway, you have a copy of the plan. A1 was, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll open it up for anyone else that wants to speak.
Okay. This is the reason that I-
State your name again, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Suzanne Roberts. And my establishment is at 3420, just down the street from Sejour and this property. And this is the reason that I really came tonight, because I've been there, I took out a lease two and a half years ago. I spent a lot of money and time and effort to put a beautiful establishment together in the city of Newport Beach, in this nice neighborhood. And the reason I did it is because we have a lot of people going back and forth on Vialito, from Lido Island, and there's nice properties there. I do interior design. I was impressed with Sejour from the outside. I did go to Sejour from time to time before it was closed. I thought it was very nice. I feel that what is really upsetting me is that when there's a problem, or when there's like a person that wants to cause a problem, they go crazy. When the people that don't have a problem, they stay quiet. For example, when there were some problems with Sejour, it was some of the little, some of the other neighborhood people, like Charlie's Locker and a couple of people like this, that were complaining. And the problem is that there was so many people that kept quiet, like myself, like my other neighbor, the other couple of people in that neighborhood, we kept quiet. We didn't think, I saw some action going on, but I didn't really make it my business to do something about it. And I think that, I don't know all the legal ramifications, but I've been there two and a half years. I've seen you close this place. I've seen two other restaurants open up, Blanca, with a alcohol and bar and restaurant. I've also seen you open Delaney's up again with an alcohol use. I feel like it's a real shame to have establishment this nice to be closed down. I saw that they were going to put in something else and tear out that bar. I felt bad about that. And just as a concerned citizen and a neighbor of this establishment, I think that it would be, prove everybody to put something in there that, or not punish them, or have a bar or restaurant, or something nice put back in there. Also, that the people that had that bar or restaurant may not be able to say who can come and who can't. Because some of the days, there was older people, and some days there were younger people. So I don't know if you're open to the public, if you can say- So, I don't know if you're open to the public, if you can say, oh, you can't come in because you're too young, or too old, or whatever. So, I just thought I'd throw that out. I've been very supportive of the neighborhood coming back alive. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mayor Selig, city council. I'm B.W. Cook. I'm a columnist with the Daily Pilot, and I'm here tonight, not familiar really with the legalities of this issue, but I'm here tonight to support Dennis and Christine Overstreet. In my role as a columnist for the Daily Pilot, I have covered social events in the city for now 17 years, and as a result of that, became acquainted with the Overstreets. And I'm here to tell you that they are people of great quality. They are people that are involved in the community, they're people that care about the community, and Dennis made his case when he came to you tonight, talking about bringing entertainment and culture and life to this community, and I can tell you from my point of view, as an independent observer, that that is the truth, and that it is his absolute passion and goal in life, and Christine as his partner, to do the right thing, to present a classy, sophisticated, intelligent, and cultural asset to this city of Newport Beach. So, I would urge you, in considering the facts in this case, to know that these are people of great quality, and that, as Ms. Roberts has just pointed out, she would like to see something nice and proper put back into that facility, and I assure you that no one can do it better than Christine and Dennis Overstreet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, council members. So, if I could, not to embarrass anybody, but I'm more accustomed to seeing Councilman Rosansky in his scouting uniform, and it's nice to see you in a suit and tie tonight. My name is David Kernan. I'm a local homeowner and business owner. I've known the Overstreets for 10 years. Our kids go to the same school, belong to a number of the same charities. I frequented the venue operated three years ago at 3400, and it was a quiet, nice place where you could enjoy wine and be around other people that enjoyed wine. A place where my age group could relax, be around other aficionados, who I suspect Dennis would challenge the thought that I am one, but I very much enjoyed that environment. It seems as though this is a tenant issue, which is arguably unfortunate, and not a problem with the Overstreets. They've got a 30-plus-year history of respectfully operating similar establishments. I sincerely hope the council looks at the history, the venue that they operated three years ago, the lack of any complaints, they're good citizens, they're good community members, and I think that what they've contemplated for this address would uniquely benefit that neighborhood and the city of Newport Beach. These are very good people that I'm proud to have as neighbors and as community members. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jim Mahoney. I own the gondola service directly across from the establishment. We've been there 24 years. I've owned it since 1995. When the Overstreets first opened the operation, it was nice. We all liked it, we were happy to see it, we needed. The mistake was the tenant. When the tenant first took it over, he ran it very nice. It was quiet, very similar to the Overstreet operation. Approximately 1990, 2006 was when he turned it over to a promoter with the loud music and the huge crowds, and the trouble started. But he's gone. In this report, which you revoked the use permit, you'll see that it goes all the way back to the beginning of 2007. My question is, for two people, is, one is the Overstreets probably should have monitored this operation a little better to see what was going on, and also, the city, citation after citation, but nothing was ever done. So, everybody knew they were in violation of the use permit, and at the end of 2007, my last conversation with the Stocktons was that he could not operate the place and make a profit under the existing use permit. I personally feel you should not punish the Overstreet for something the tenant did. We would like to see it operated as it was originally intended. We certainly need business over there. Perhaps, rather than revoking this use permit, you could reinstate it and maybe monitor the situation so it doesn't get out of hand. Maybe the original use permit allowed them to stay open until 11 o'clock. The next year, you expanded it to midnight, and in your report, there was concerns that it would turn into a bar and nightclub, which is exactly what happened. So, perhaps you could give them their permit and monitor it a little better, because it really, certainly wasn't their fault that it got out of control, but there was plenty of problems over there. And as far as the Delaney's permit, they do have a permit, they, they're limited to alcohol sales until 10 o'clock, and that was due to the Newport PD and the ABC. So, again, I don't think you should punish the Overstreets for what the tenant did.
Okay, well, just for clarification, we're not revoking the use permit. We're going back to the original use permit.
Okay.
Just to keep that clear, it's not being revoked.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Okay, I guess I would ask our council to maybe respond to the seven points, whatever it was.
Could I ask a question first?
Yes.
Of the appellant?
Sure.
You, one of the Overstreets could come forward to answer my question? Thank you. You opened as a wine retailer and a wine bar?
Yes.
And then you, as you say, you got a different kind of license so that you could also offer fine spirits?
Correct.
I don't know, you say fine spirits? I don't know, I don't drink hard liquor, so...
Fine spirits, yes.
Why did you stop operating?
Why did we stop operating?
Uh-huh. At some point, you decided you didn't want to do it, and you...
No, what happened is, the enthusiasm got a little too great. We opened up two other restaurants here, one that was called La Kaye, and one, we took over aubergine. And we loved being in the very high-end business. At that point, I, my Beverly Hills operation was requiring me a lot of time, and my wife was running the two restaurants. A couple that had frequented, being the Stocktons, came to us and said, we love your operation, we would love to put in a different operation and still maintain, and we drew this up in the lease that we got, very concerned, had the law firm draw up, saying, look, if your operation doesn't work, we've worked too hard, we love this establishment, put too much money into it, if you can't run it like we're running it, then you'll have to give it back to us.
Okay, you answered my question, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, I also had a question.
Sure.
There was mention in the staff report about a new lease to home real estate.
Yes.
And then an idea where you would allow the existing use permit to expire in accordance...
Yes, yes.
So, where does all that stand?
Councilman Hahn, that is exactly true. I mean, it's what, one of the things that's, and I'll say this as brief as I can, one of the things that concerns me the most is, all these years, we have a stellar reputation in the business. We did not want that black spot of something being revoked from us. We did proceed to see if we could lease the premises to another operator. The only other operators that, there is no interest other than one of these alcohol places that we have been against. We had a prominent, finally, real estate firm, which I shouldn't probably say the name, but everyone knows, signed a lease, and I thought, fine, this is, this is it. I don't have to tell anyone that hasn't all of a sudden been following the Asian markets, their tenant improvements, the cost to do what they want to do there, which I think would be a great location for them, have skyrocketed. I don't know if that lease is really going to be, if they're gonna be able to take over that place. If they take over that place, this is all for naught. But if they don't, I still have mortgage payments to make, and I would like to go back there and operate it, but if home realty can come through, they have signed a lease, I will not force them to the wall and put them in court if they can't honor it because of financial situations, but we don't know.
But they are obligated under a lease.
They are obligated, but to enforce a lease that they can't fulfill because of economic conditions, what are you gonna do? You know, who needs the angst of courts? I will take it back and try to operate it myself. It isn't gonna do me any good to try to make someone pay when they can't afford to pay.
Okay, but part of your problem is you have a financial obligation.
I have a financial obligation, and believe me, I cannot...
They undertook a financial obligation with you. It's awfully nice of you not to, but I don't quite understand why you would take that position.
But, believe me, the cost of enforcing these things can be two years, it can be hundreds of thousands of dollars, and what do you do if they go bankrupt? Sometimes you gotta be very fair. We are in negotiations with them. We have a lease.
Have they offered you that they do not intend to perform?
We don't know. The attorneys are talking. I would love them to be there, but if they can't, I have to perform.
And if they do...
Then, oh, this is for naught.
I understand that.
Yes.
If they do, you apparently thought it was okay to let your use permits expire because they wouldn't be used, and after 180 days...
After 180 days, they would expire. So, if you reinstated this, our use permit, and we will know within 180 days if they're gonna be able to move forward, then it expires. That's fair. It's just like what we promised, not you, but the planning commission. We said when Sejour was evicted from that property, we would not operate until we had a decision. We could've gone back and fought, but who needs the angst?
So, if they did commit, then would you stipulate in advance about the expiry of that use permit for non-use? I mean...
Would be more, if they are a good tenant, if they can be a good tenant, absolutely let them go ahead, because I think it would be an asset there. They would be fine, but, you know, I don't have a crystal ball anymore. I thought we had a good tenant, we ended up with a rogue tenant last time.
Okay, I guess a question that I have is, is it possible to stipulate in advance and have that be legally binding, that the use permit would expire for non-use?
Yes, absolutely. I would go along with that, because within, within 180 days, we're gonna know whether they're gonna be able to move in there, and if they can't move in there, I cannot afford for it to be vacant for another year without trying to create income, and, believe me, I've done this for 38 years, I know how to make a profit out of that place, it's just I'm becoming an old man. But I will go back there and get on that horse and go back to work again. Does that answer?
Well, thank you for your answer.
Okay.
Do I have a question?
Is that an issue you'd like to comment on?
I'm confused about the issue of the lease and the expiration. If somebody was to take over that lease and open up an office, and that was a valid retail use, that was authorized, then it wouldn't be, it would be abandoned, because you would be changing the use to a more conforming use. So, I don't think the 100 days, 180 days would make a difference, and I don't know that it benefits the city having that use permit out there with 180 days if the Overstreets are actually intending to go in and operate it. I'm confused by the timeline on the fact that they want to go back in and operate it, but they can wait 180 days, and then after, if they don't use the lease at 180 days, after the end of the 180 days, then they still have an abandonment, so I don't understand the...
Can I make it a little more clear for you?
Sure.
We have a signed lease, but we don't know if this party can perform on the lease, because it involves tenant improvements, and because of the economic situation, we just don't know. I don't know what's gonna happen with real estate values, I can't, they don't know. They know for sure they cannot do what they originally intended to do. I am trying to help them financially make tenant improvements, but if they cannot go ahead, then I have to do something with this property, and I will go back, and I will make it a successful operation that is very becoming. I mean, it's, when we came forward before, we had 150 residents sign and saying, we want you.
Could you clarify?
So, I don't, I understand that to mean that they're not, they're not offering to abandon it after 180 days.
I will abandon it within 100, if this can't get resolved within the next six months, I think I should have the right to be able to go in and run a business. If I, if it, if they can go ahead and move forward, great, but we do have a signed lease. We do have a signed lease, but if you have someone today, understand this whole financial crisis out there, people can't perform, what do you do to them? You sue them? They go bankrupt. Where do you, what do you gain? You have to have, I have to be a smart businessman here and have a safety net. Is that difficult? This is a business decision.
All right. Can I, before David speaks, can I ask, Robin, abandonment is different than letting it lapse?
Yes, abandonment is abandoning the use permit, agreeing to abandon the use permit. I think there's a couple confusing items here. It sounds like he's basically asking for the council to not do anything for 180 days to see if they can find another use, but then, at the end of the 180 days, they don't want to have any revoca, any modification of the terms, and the other thing, and they really don't, it doesn't sound like they really want it to lapse unless somebody else goes in. If somebody else goes in, then it will be deemed abandoned, because they will have changed the use.
If it's a change of use.
Yes.
But if another tenant, they decide, you know, it's too much of a strain to operate it ourselves, so we're going to, again...
Release it to somebody else to do the same thing that's in the use permit, we have no control over that, under these conditions.
I will, I will make, I will make a condition that I am gonna be the only one that will go back there and operate it as we originally applied. I have learned, if there is a lesson to be learned, a costly lesson here, of 10 months of vacancy, legal fees, and even more important than that, something that you think is very special and very dear to you, it's like a wooden stake being splintered in your heart. You hate seeing that happen, and I know how many people enjoyed the place before, and I know how to run a fine wine spirits. We are a unique operation, and we've been very successful, and as I said, I can document this, we're recognized as one of the finest in the United States.
Do I, I have a question for you, Mr. Overstreet. I was on the planning commission when the original use permit and the amendment I see was granted, and I remember those hearings very well, and you came in and you sold the planning commission on this concept and how you were gonna run it and everything, and then you went and sold it off and walked away from it. So, I guess my question to you is, if you're granted your desire this evening, what's gonna keep you for a year from now, walking off and doing the same thing you did with Sejour, just walking away from this thing?
Sejour has been a hell of a lesson, pardon the language. I had no intentions of seeing such a disaster happen. No one wants to lose that type of money, 10 months.
You had no intentions, so you got your use permits either of doing that. I mean, I'm looking here at the, at the minutes, and...
Mayor, can I?
No, let me, let me finish.
Okay.
And I asked the question here, I says, what's gonna happen if you sold this business to someone else, and how are we gonna control it? And essentially, my worst fears happened here. So, I mean, you know, how do we know it's not gonna happen all over again?
Mayor, I can tell you, I can do the very best, but there is no guarantee in the future. I might have a heart attack right now, there's no guarantees, but as I am here, I can promise you, I can show you our record. We have maintained, we have a reputation. We do not enjoy the fact of having 10 months vacant, that we said that we would take it off. We do not enjoy spending all of these attorney's fees. We've learned something. The Stocktons, if you want to go down that route, represented themselves as professional... The Stocktons, if you want to go down that route, represented themselves as professional homeowners that were lawyers, security dealers, had no idea they would turn it into what they did. What makes someone turn bad, I don't know. I can't guarantee you that. We did our very best to get, when someone came to us and said they were reliable, I believed them.
Okay, well, you answered my question.
Mayor, I just wanted to say, the one confusing point here is that I don't think the 180 days is necessary in the sense that if the modified terms, which were to go back to the original approval that they had asked for and to operate that way that they want to operate, the only difference is the change in the hours and the elimination of the hard alcohol. And all the rest is all pretty much the same, that's what the Planning Commission did. So if the council goes ahead and approves this, or upholds the Planning Commission's, then they will be able to reopen if they want to, or if the lessee comes through, then they'll be able to change it, the use to the new legal lease, legal use, if it's a law office.
Counselman Webb?
I have a question concerning when it could be considered abandoned. Now, if the new lessee does take forth, would it be considered abandoned the day they occupied it, or the day they got a building permit for tenant improvements? Because I'm assuming the tenant improvements are going to remove the bar and make it into a real estate office.
It would be the day that they get, I mean, it would depend, I mean, they could stipulate to an abandonment, but it would have to be occupied and used under a different use. Changed over to a new use, the tenant improvements, I don't believe would be sufficient.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure out when it's truly abandoned, when you, but if the real estate business decided that they spent a lot of money on the improvements and then just still couldn't open, the Port of Gentlemen's got a problem in the, okay.
Okay. Counselman Henn?
I have another question. This would be of our planning director. I'd like to, I'd like to get a little better understanding, if you can answer this question, of why the Planning Commission was intent on eliminating the Type 47 ABC license. What was their thinking there?
Mr. Mayor, the Planning Commission looked at that, and when they realized that under the ABC terms for the license, that hard liquor permit came along with a requirement to be a bona fide eating establishment, they were saying, "That's never what we intended." So our mistake back when the amendment was approved, that's why they wanted that provision removed from the use permit, because they realized that was the source of this contention about the ambiguous conditions. And they said, "We were never intending for this to be an eating establishment. We'll rectify that, we'll require that as a change for this use permit."
Okay, then now my question is of the city attorney. I mean, is it, what, there are other restrictions in that use permit that pretty severely limited the sale of distilled spirits, you know, as a percentage of revenue, et cetera. And is it legally feasible to have a Type 47 liquor license and with these other restrictions to continue to operate? I mean, is it mutually exclusive, this Type 47 license and the other conditions that were originally approved here?
I wasn't at the Planning Commission meeting, but it sounds like, and my experience has been, that that's what the Type 47 license attaches to is a bona fide eating establishment. So what I think happened in 2002 is that staff tried really hard to fit a round peg into a square hole. And maybe at that point in time, they should have looked at it a little bit more closely and said that this doesn't fit, particularly that expanded use. I think that the intent was never to have a restaurant in that location, a bar in that location, or a nightclub. The intent was to have a retail wine tasting establishment.
But they approved distilled, the sale of distilled liquors, that's not-
I think it was, it sounds, it sounds to me like the Planning Commission, looking back at what happened in 2002, recognized that there were problems with that approval.
That's correct.
But, okay, but at the original time, and maybe it's the mayor's I should be asking this question of, but the Planning Commission did approve the sale of a certain amount of food, a limited, not full dining menu-
Right.
-you would see in a regular restaurant, and in the context of a Type 47 liquor license. Are you saying that was inconsistent then and would be inconsistent now?
I think knowing what we know now, yes.
Yeah, I think that, you know, if you look through these minutes, I was just looking through some of the stuff that the concerns were raised. I, I'm looking on page 106, and I asked, "How could you consider a five-course, $65 dinner with five and a half glasses of wine a retail sale?" I mean, it was, but I think that, as Robin said, we were trying to help the Overstreets out and trying to peg around, peg in a square hole, and the staff, you know, was providing a path to do that, but in retrospect, it was probably the wrong thing to do.
Mr. Mayor, because I was at the 2002 hearing and working with staff on that, and I believe it was our understanding at the time, that even though the menu may have looked elaborate, what was portrayed to us by the Overstreets was that this was more tasting that you would have along with tasting of wines, and some people might want to have a Scotch with that tasting instead of wine. It wasn't a traditional sit-down dinner.
How do you define that with a Type 47 license?
Well, I agree with the city attorney that that was probably inappropriate.
Can we hear from the attorney, our attorney?
Yeah, well, that's what I'd like, is I think we've got some legal issues that were raised that we need to address here on top of everything else we've been talking about.
Yes, a couple of other factual issues first, though. Mr. Thomas said that the plans show a bar. That's true, that bar was always there, it was there in 2001, and that bar was intended to be for wine tasting. That was the representation made in 2001 and in 2002 as well. There was also mention made of the fact that the Stocktons were attorneys, which is an interesting thing to hear now, because the attorney who was previously representing the Overstreets in these proceedings brought evidence to the Planning Commission, which is in your staff-reported pages 523 and 525, that in fact, at the time the Stocktons entered into the lease, they were not licensed to practice law. Mr. Thomas made reference to Condition 6 in the prior permit, and his interpretation of that condition is that the only way you can do anything, revoke or modify the permit, is by showing that there's a public nuisance. I disagree with that very strongly. The Newport Beach Municipal Code says that a use permit can be modified or revoked if the conditions have been violated. Now, I can't point to you any cases about that subject, and I think the reason for that is that that's the easy case. If the conditions have been violated, you can revoke or modify the use permit. It doesn't take any more understanding than that. Condition 6, in effect, added another basis for some action to be taken with regard to the use permit, and that is, the use is in compliance with the conditions, but nevertheless has become a public nuisance. Condition 6 does not say that the permit can only be revoked if the establishment has become a public nuisance. What Mr. Thomas is suggesting is that in effect, for this establishment only, part of the municipal code has been repealed by Condition 6, and there's nothing to indicate that that's the intent, and legally, it doesn't make any sense. With regard, again, to the notice issue and the Moalaf versus Yanavici case, that case involved a zoning enforcement action under the Los Angeles Municipal Code, and the Los Angeles Municipal Code provisions very expressly said, "You must give notice to the owner and give the owner an opportunity to cure the problem." The Newport Beach Municipal Code is a little broader than that, it speaks in terms of owner or operator, particularly in connection with alcohol establishments. And I believe that Mr. Thomas may have miscited one of the sections. He put up a citation on the screen for Municipal Code Section 10.50.040. I think what he was really referring to was 1.05.040, which says that a notice of an administrative citation is to be directed to the responsible person, and the way the responsible person is defined in Section 1.05.050 is any individual who is the owner or occupant of real property. So under your own municipal code, notice to the operator alone is sufficient.
Could I just interrupt a moment there, too? I was noticing that, for example, obviously during some of the Sejour issues, the Overstreets were not directly notified.
That appears to be the case.
But at a certain point, they became aware of it. And on May 21, '08, there's a letter from the Overstreets about modifying the conditional use permit. So at a certain point, they knew. And does it, are we, does the law require us to disregard that they knew because there wasn't that notice through the Sejour tenancy into their thing?
The basic premise of due process in its broadest sense is notice and an opportunity to be heard. And I have to say that the cases on notice, whether it has to be notice given, or whether actual notice that comes to you from some other source is what's required, the cases are a little bit inconsistent. The practical reality is the Overstreets definitely had notice of the proceedings before the Planning Commission to revoke or modify the use permit. Moving on to a couple of other issues that Mr. Hunt raised, he brought up the Anderson case, and there's a quote from a letter that Mr. Hunt wrote to the city council in connection with this proceeding that reads, "When a permuty has acquired a vested right, it may be revoked. If the permuty fails to comply with reasonable terms or conditions," sorry, wrong quote, "in any event." The gist of it is that the Anderson case is specifically the case that says, here we go, "A landlord is not responsible to other parties for the misconduct or injurious acts of his tenant to whom his estate has been leased for a lawful and proper purpose, when there is no nuisance or illegal structure upon it at the time of the leasing." In other words, if everything that's going on with the property is lawful at the start, the landlord is not responsible for what the tenant does. But in the Anderson case in particular, the landlord had actually leased the property for an unlawful use, and the landlord was found responsible for the tenant's actions. And that's exactly the situation we have here, that was the point that I was making at the outset. Finally, the Goat Hill Tavern case is kind of one of those cases that, because it's so high-profile, particularly in this part of the world, kind of gets abused a lot. The Goat Hill Tavern case really stands for the proposition that you have a vested right in a use permit, it isn't something that just expires, the city can't decide, we're just not going to renew it because we don't feel like renewing it. That's not what we're dealing with here. No one is saying that there aren't vested rights, we are attempting to provide due process here. And again, just in closing, for probably the 10th time tonight, the use permit has not been revoked. There is a use permit, the Overstreets can go back in tomorrow and operate the business that they were first operating in 2001. There is absolutely nothing to stop them from doing that. Thank you.
Counselman Webb?
And I'm not quite sure who answers this, but I almost got the impression from, I believe it was Mr. Hunt, said that a landowner isn't responsible for what his tenant does, and so that I got the impression that, let's see, we kick the tenant, I mean, we say that the tenant has done something bad, and they leave. Landowner issues it to another tenant, a year down the road, the other tenant essentially does the same thing, and how long can this go on before the city can have action on a use permit to revoke it, because a series of tenants in a row have not met the conditions? And, I mean, does the landowner get that permit forever, no matter who rents it to?
That might be, that might be a better question for Mr. Thomas. To me, it hinges to some degree on whether the use that it's leased for is a lawful use or not, and here it isn't.
Okay, well, we like to be fair here, so, Mr. Thomas, we're going to give you five minutes to rebut all of this.
Sure. Okay, first of all, let me just point out one thing. If you look at page 23 of the report, which is Exhibit B, Conditions of Approval, that's submitted to you, you'll see that what the modification does is basically gut the entire place. It doesn't put it back to where it was. It says, if you read it, it says you take out all this, there's no seating. It says absolutely no seating. In A2, you're going to have 29 people in there tasting wine, and some citizen in Newport Beach says, "You know, I'd like to sit down and enjoy my wine." Sorry, the city of Newport Beach says you can't do that, because we can't have any seats in there. Does that make any sense at all? If you look at what the conditions were that were approved here to modify this, they completely changed what was originally there. So, but in response, I also noticed another thing that Planning did not point out to you, and no fault to Planning, I'm not saying anything, but there was a policy, a city council policy, K7, I believe, which they mentioned in the minutes, and they said that this would not impact K7, the Type 47 license. They still classified this as the food service being ancillary. They didn't classify this as a restaurant. And that was brought up in the 2002 hearing, and Planning said that that's not impacted. So I don't know if that's been discussed or considered or not by the city council, but their own, but the own planning department determined that what they were proposing with their menu was still ancillary and not a sit-down restaurant. I think what the reference is to, that the Overstreets proposed, when they operated it, that they were going to serve food between the hours of 11:00 and 12:00 p.m. And for that reason, it wasn't considered to be a restaurant. And there's no evidence before the city council that when the Overstreets operated this with the second use permit, the Type 47 license, that they ever violated that provision that they were granted to serve food between 11:00 and 12:00 p.m. So again, we go back to, what is happening here is virtually a complete revocation of almost everything that they were given for the first use permit and then the modification of the use permit, basically making it almost impossible for them to operate, and kind of making a joke of it. Because how can, again, if you read this exhibit, you'll see that it basically takes everything out of there. So to answer the legal portion of this, the reason I cited that case was for the proposition that I cited it for, the Anderson case, and that was it. Not for what the ultimate conclusion is, I realize it's not a core law, and that's where I'm used to working, but that's why I cited it. So that's my response to council. If you have any questions for me, we'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. Any more questions for Mr. Thomas? Okay. Thank you, sir.
I have another question of staff. I would like a succinct explanation of what's required to be, of staff, of what's required to be taken out of the establishment here as a result of the Planning Commission decision. Can we review that quickly here, what's required to be taken out?
If you define your comment, I-
Counselman Henn, I apologize.
Can I digress for just one minute, because there was something that's brought up, this will only take 20 seconds. But in the last hearing, the proposal on the lapse, the municipal code provides that if the use permit is not in use for 180 days, it lapses on its, by operational law. Now, the question is, why are the Overstreets not entitled to that very same protection that every other use permit holder in this city is entitled to? That if they don't use it for 180 days, it lapses by operational law? And it's been suggested here, they were asked, the Planning Commission said, "Surrender it." They didn't have any obligation to surrender it. It lapses by operational law, so why, they were going to try to take that right away from them as well. So my point is that the use permit itself has not been active during this appellate process, during the hearing process, so it's basically acted as a tolling process. So if there's a lapse in the use permit for non-use, it begins to run at a different date. But they're entitled to that protection of that code, just like any other citizen in this city. Thank you.
Okay. Can I get an answer to my question?
Can I get an answer to my question?
Mayor, on page two of the staff report, the four bullet items are the essence of what the Planning Commission asked the Overstreets to agree to in a revised conditions of the use permit. And again, this was consistent with some of the problems that had existed before, that the Police Department had records on. So, the first was a reduction of hours to 11:00 p.m., close at 11:00 p.m. That should be consistent with retail wine sales, retail off-site wine sales. And again, establishing the retail sales use as the principal use with just ancillary wine tasting. The removal of the existing physical improvements, not consistent with operational requirements of an off-site retail sales. We're talking about here, for example, the original floor plan showed cold kitchen. If you see what was out there now, there were all the cooking stoves, heating units, all that good stuff, consistent with a restaurant operation. So, again, this was what the Planning Commission said, staff, you go back and work with the Overstreets and see if you can get them to agree on conditions substantially consistent with the four bulleted items. You know, if you need to come up with details about which piece of equipment, fine, do that. And the last one, elimination of the Type 47 ABC license, consistent with what the City Attorney was saying, yes, they realized it was something they probably shouldn't have done back in 2002, fix it. As to the no seating at the bar, there is a condition in there, I think it was, this one is a little bit misstatement. At that point in time, it was, well, if the Overstreets won't cooperate with Planning Commission, we'll put that in there. I don't think they necessarily intended that you couldn't sit at the bar. I think it was, don't have restaurant tables in there with seating. But, you know, we could clarify that. You know, again, I think the Planning Commission was willing to have seating at the wine tasting bar, as long as that was the limit of the use, a wine tasting bar with off-site retail sales.
And, and other seating in Section A2.
Yes, consistent with the original use permit, yes.
Because I went there when it was being operated before. There was seating, you know, not, not table-type seating, but easy chair, small lounge kind of furniture chain, that was available in there.
Yes, sir.
So, it was not the intent of the Planning Commission to eliminate that auxiliary seating through Part A2.
It was not their intent to do that, no.
And when the Planning Commission originally approved it, they must have understood that there was going to be preparation of warm food, looking at the menu.
Well, you know, I think as Ms. Wood kind of alluded to, it was, there was this big menu, but you, for example, could arrange to have more or less a private wine tasting party, and you could pick from amongst those things. And I even know when we looked at it as a staff, there was a suggestion was, you know, you essentially have it catered, you bring it in from outside, and what you have available onsite are simply areas to, you know, sort out and put it on plates for individual consumption. But, you know, the, the kitchen was not going to be used for preparation from scratch of menu items.
Even though you were shown a 65-item menu?
That was on the amendment. That wasn't on the original use permit. That was on the amendment.
And again, I think it was, you know, the Planning Commission was trying to help the occupants make a go of a business. And, and again, in retrospect, and I think one of the other commissioners still on the commission remembered the discussion, as did the mayor, and it was, you know, let's try and help them not realizing that you were putting our conditions in conflict with those of the ABC that said this is licenses for a bona fide eating establishment. And that was part of the recent action by the Planning Commission is to rectify that.
If I could just make two brief final comments. First, regarding the menu, on page 108 of your staff report, the minutes from the Planning Commission indicate that Mrs. Overstreet said, "This menu is more than what we want to handle because we have such a tiny kitchen. The menu is evolving." So, I'm, it's not clear to me that the Planning Commission really saw what the menu was going to be. Second, with regard to the concept, excuse me, of allowing the permit to lapse, the, the aspect of that, that, that Mr. Thomas has never addressed is, what happens if another tenant, another type of tenant, doesn't come in there? Then what, what permit do we have? What conditions apply? And so, I think it's important, if, if there's an alcohol permit in place and the Realty Group comes in and they're able to make a go of it, then the permit's going to lapse in 180 days regardless. But what if they don't come in? There's, there's a permit in place, and it should be the appropriate permit. Thank you.
I also might add that, that the concept of having a right to allow your permit to lapse is usually in the context of making that voluntary decision that you don't want to operate that use anymore. And, and after 180 days, then it, by operation of law, it's been considered to be lapsed, and the use permit goes away. But there are instances, and there are many instances in case law that talks about the fact that after 180 days, maybe you've been trying, and the city might not know you've been trying, to release it, and you haven't had success in releasing it, and you have every intent of going ahead. In that case, it may not operate by operation of law, and sometimes the city might even have to have a hearing on whether it actually did lapse. So, factually, that 180 days isn't something that's kind of like a right to have. It's just a way for the city to manage uses or use permits that have, have not, have been abandoned voluntarily by the owner.
Okay.
I think we should clarify, though, that if the Realty use comes in, our code provides that at that time, the use permit is no longer in force.
Yeah, I think we all understand that.
They're in and out of business two weeks later.
Yeah, the restaurant's still.
There's no, no use permit there.
Right.
Correct.
Okay, I want to close with the public testimony. And Councilman Hen, this is your district, and I kind of sensed you might have a solution here, but I'm not sure.
I don't have a solution. I've got a suggestion.
Well, wrong again.
I've got a suggestion. You know, I, I do think that the Overstreets ought to have the right to operate a viable business under the, under the original use permit. And so, my view is that we, they should be able to have the seats at the bar, come on. And then, the other occasional seating in the Part A2, they have to be operating retail sales out of Part A1. There shouldn't be any equipment or seating or any other such thing. It's inconsistent with the operation of a retail business in Part A1, an off-sale retail The, I am persuaded by the legal advice that we've gotten that a Type 47 license is not appropriate in, in a circumstance unless there is full-service food. But, it also seems to me, and, Mr. Mayor, I, you know, I respect the fact that you participated in that, but when I look back on the record, and I did not participate in it, it seems to me there's, there's a fair amount of evidence that would indicate that there was some sort of an intent that there be upscale appetizer-type, light food available for the tasting, in conjunction with the tasting of wine in the wine bar. And so, this idea that it was, should be just a strictly a cold kitchen, I don't think is consistent with the overall concept that was presented, at least. I'm not sure about how factually consistent it goes back to. But it seems to me a reasonable answer here would be to let them stay open until midnight on the weekends, limit, have a specific condition limiting the service of food to that of appetizer, a limited appetizer menu, and that the Type 47 license goes away. I think that restores their ability to operate the business generally in accordance with what the original approval was, and not more than that. So, that's, that would be my suggestion for Council to consider.
Okay. And that would pretty much, on page 23, require a modification to Condition Number 3, Number 7, and Number 8.
And I believe 9.
Nine, yeah.
You're a lot faster than I am.
Okay, number 9. You're right.
Maybe Steve could tell us, as far as a.
And then, excuse me, just one, one second, Nancy. And then, if the Overstreets don't like that, they can apply for a full Type 47 restaurant use in that location and make the case that that's an appropriate use for that location while at, being enabled to make economic use of the premise in the meantime.
Well, Sharon, you correct me wrong, but I think the problem with that is parking. And I think that's, I think that's what we got forced into here is trying, you know, trying to do a restaurant here, not calling it a restaurant because the parking isn't available. And to try and convert this into, you know, you know, a restaurant eventually, there's no place to park it.
Well, then, that would be their problem. But I mean, it's, it's, maybe.
Well, no, I'm just explaining the circumstances of why we're here.
No, I am aware of that, and I understand that. And I, and it may well be they have to ask for a parking variance in order to make that restaurant application work, and maybe they won't get it. But at least they'll be restored to a position of operating in a viable econom, well, I think anyway, at least a viable way in the premise while they consider their alternatives.
David?
Mr. Mayor, I was just going to confirm that, in fact, that was why the Planning Commission had originally given them till the end of June to submit a restaurant application, because one of the conditions of the original use permit requires that they retain 22 spaces in the parking garage. And our understanding was that lease expires at the end of this year. You know, the Overstreets told us that wasn't so, but we were encouraging them to apply for a full-blown restaurant use permit application so we could work out whatever needed to be worked out on parking. But, so we could be above board and not be back here again debating what was or wasn't intended.
Well, is that, Mike, just to clarify, so, they could have, obviously, some warm things, but it would be appetizers. We're not going to be cooking a big pot of stew or something and.
Well, they, I don't think they're intending stew, but, but that's correct. Not a full, not a full dining menu, appetizer, entree, desserts, all of that, but a selection of appetizer-type servings.
If they wanted to melt the breed, they could.
Pardon?
Say, if they wanted to melt the breed, they could.
Well, you know, what I'm suggesting is that if they do have warm prep equipment in the kitchen, that they not be required to take that out, because it's, they need to have a certain amount of equipment. And, and if they wanted to prepare these appetizers from scratch, seems to me they ought to be able to do that because that is consistent with the high, the high-end ambiance they're shooting for.
Well, I would support your suggestions.
I, I guess I do have one question. Is this a viable proposal, Robin? I mean, that we can condition it with a menu description that is consistent with this?
I, I think it's, it's, I think if you describe it as an appetizer, I mean, they don't have to get rid of the hot food service because they're, if they don't use it for full serv, menu service, then it's just there. And it also will leave open the opportunity for them to try and make more use of that kitchen. But I think the, the more you try to fit something in that doesn't quite fit with anything that we have and the code, the less viable it becomes as far as an enforcement point of view.
The risk, the risk that we take is that the appetizers start growing into full meals.
I, I understand, but that would have to be accompanied by a menu that would be consistent with that ordinarily, and maybe there's a way to do this. This is, I don't know if this is a viable alternative or not, but I, it seems to me that's consistent with what was originally intended. And by the way, consistent with my own personal experience in the establishment before it was taken over by the, the new, the different operators.
I think if the, the concept is, is that it's primarily, that primarily the purpose is within that A2 dining area that it's wine tasting and, and the retail sales, and that the, that the service of appetizers only is ancillary, and you don't worry about whether they're hot or cold.
Councilmember Hen is, and that, I think I heard everything, but you're, you're not, we would not be allowing distilled spirits.
The Type 47 license would go away.
Goes away, so, okay, so.
Just, just bear in mind.
Mr. Overstreet asked me to ask a question. If, if the permit is modified, he asked, wants to know if, he had a piano in there. He wanted to know if entertainment is going to be allowed, consistent with what it was under the original license.
That was approved under the original license.
It was.
Entertainment on Friday and Saturday night, I think.
It was.
Was that under the original or the second one?
I believe that was the amendment, and so, Condition 13 here says no live entertainment.
Yeah. Well, on his behalf, we'd ask that perhaps that we could amend that, too, because that would help the situation somewhat without the Type 47 license.
I guess, I guess I would be willing to agree to non-amplified music.
Single instrument.
Sing, single instrument, non-amplified, Friday, Saturday night, maybe one other night of the week, I don't know, something like that.
Okay.
And they'd have to get a live entertainment permit.
For each occasion?
No, just a single permit.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilman Curry?
Well, with that change also, I'm inclined to agree with Councilmember Hen in terms of the changes that have been proposed. I think that we have not necessarily had a good record when we try to micromanage the configuration of seats in restaurants. And, and frankly, I think we, we stray too far when we try and do that. So, to the extent that we can give the Overstreets, who have convinced me that they are both viable and excellent business people, the flexibility they need to, to be viable at this location, consistent with the comments that have been made and with, doing away with the Type 47 license, I think I'm okay with that.
You called this a restaurant, it should be a wine tasting staff.
Yes, in wine tasting staff.
From which you're referring.
For making spirits.
Okay, I'm pretty much.
Actually, actually, the, the definition is it's a retail sales with the wine tasting is, is an ancillary to the retail sales, yes.
Can I further suggest, and I'm about ready to incorporate this into a motion, that we continue this item to allow staff to come back with the specific language that we presumably, hopefully, that the Overstreets will be okay with, that we can consider and then approve. I think we're.
Well, I, I think that at the, 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 the public hearing's been closed, so this would just be for staff to come back with a resolution that reflects the Council's action.
Yeah, I think that would be a good suggestion, than trying to put this together on the fly.
Yeah.
And we don't need 600 pages of staff reports?
No, it would just, it would just be the resolution that would reflect the action that you took tonight, and that would give us an opportunity.
Do we need a formal motion tonight?
Yes, a formal motion with the request that Council come back with, that, that staff come back with a resolution for you to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? How was in favor?
Motion carries.
Great. Next item on our agenda is public comments. Madam Clerk?
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Okay. Does anyone wish to address the Council on anything not on the agenda?
I live in Coronet del Mar. And I'm not quite sure of the format, I've never been here before. I wanted to talk about the proposed parking permits. When I Googled it, I found a, an article from September of 2006, so I don't know if anything has happened since that time, and I don't want to speak about it if it's.
Which parking permits are you talking about?
Um, permits in Coronet del Mar in the Flower Streets.
There was a suggestion about, was it a year and a half ago, looking at along Ocean Boulevard and back, and nothing was done there. And at this point, there's, there's, we are having a planning meeting, and at some point there might be issues about whether there should be some permits, but there's nothing on the books at this point.
Okay. You know, I'm not sure how to then address the Council on that.
You have three minutes to tell us whatever you want to say.
Well, I'm sure there are a lot of people who want to talk about it, but I found some interesting comments from the Daily Pilot article, that they were concerned that the Coastal Commission would reject any restrictions on parking because of broadening public access to the coast. But when I look at their mission statement, it talks about protecting and conserving, restoring and enhancing the environment. And I'm worried about so many people being at the beach at one time. And I'm worried about so many people being at the beach at one time, what that environmental impact is. And, you know, I don't know what environmental studies, how many bodies you can have per square inch on the bo-- on the beach before there's a problem. But as a residence, I'm, I'm getting to the point where I don't even want to go to my local beach anymore, because there's so many people, you know, it's not fun for my family anymore. It's, I feel like if there's so many people going to the beach, there are other beaches that can handle it. It's a residential beach, and that's why I kind of want to, I think with public parking, that's good, but once we fill up that parking, um, lot, and we start getting into the residential, we've reached our limit of how many. Because I don't know how it was designed, how many parking spots there would be at that beach, but I feel like we've kind of reached the limit. Too many bodies on there, and you can't enjoy yourself on the beach, so. I don't know how to go about making this happen for residential permits, so that once the parking lot's filled, that's it.
I, I would suggest a good first step is to go to the Coronet del Mar Residents Association, CDMRA.org, and suggest, see if, what interest there is in, in the community, because there are a lot of community representatives there.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Just, just to be fair, when we were talking about the permits, it wasn't for, during the day, it was, it was, the problem seemed to stem in the evening, when the beach had already closed, and the residents there had come to us and said that there were problems in the evening with people being there that had no re-- business being there, because the beach was closed. But we, I don't think anybody ever considered at that time, or now even, although we are considering, you know, in conjunction with maybe commercial parking, and more in the closer to coast highway, or under consideration, but having permits during the day to, to prevent anybody but residents from parking.
No, I'm not, I'm just saying that as a limit, because it's going away with the culture or the nature of the beach, and of the community, and of the village, that it's not like Newport Beach down on the peninsula, or Huntington Beach, where you have these huge parking lots and a broad beach. We purchased our house in Coronet del Mar because of the small community and the nature of the beach. And, you know, if we were interested in such a big, massive beach, we would have looked elsewhere. But I think what we're doing is we're moving away with the, oh, I'm sorry, the culture of the community of Coronet del Mar. It's small residential streets, it's not designed to accommodate so many people.
I, I understand, I'm just letting you know what the status of it was at the time.
Councilman Webb?
There's one thing I, I would like to point out, and the beach down there is a state beach.
Right.
And the city is the steward for the state.
Right.
And so that when we start considering any limitations to anybody going to that beach from the state, we end up having the problems that the Coastal Commission is in.
Right. Well, this is why I meant about environmental issues.
I understand.
Like Yosemite, how many people can you have in there before it's a problem?
That, that's true, and they have, they have looked at that, I'm, I'm sure, and we have not come up with a way to differentiate how you would begin to restrict people from using the beach and still be fair to everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Diane Romick. I'm president of our HOA, Pacific Ridge, which is the community above Crystal Cove, if you will, closer to the 73. So I just, I'm here from our community with two requests, and I did print some things out, but I don't have enough. So, you all, all of you wouldn't mind sharing, a little person have their own. The first request is in regard to fire lane enforcement. Our solution was to throw some money out, get a private patrol, our solution failed. But if you all would be able to put Parking Patrol up into our community for fire lane protection, it would produce about $56,000 per year, if each ticket is $45. So, that's just one trip a day up the hill. So there's the top line and the bottom line on that request. And then the second request is just that, I don't know if you can see from there, but on the large aerial photo, at the, if you will, the upper right-hand corner of our property, there's a new park going in at Ridge Park in East Coastal Peak. And I just wanted to give you a heads up, we had a meeting with the Fire Marshal last week over a few issues, but this is going to become a big, big problem. There's 40 parking spaces with two baseball diamonds, three overlay soccer fields, a basketball court, and then every Friday, Saturday morning already, the streets are completely lined with bicyclists, who either going for the challenge of Ridge Park, or they're sneaking in the backside of Irvine Conservancy. So I guess that way they don't have to pay. So there's going to be a big, big parking challenge, and I would just ask that please, Parks and Rec, work with Fire Department, try to get it, hopefully, prevented, instead of have to go in and solve something later.
If we make enough money off those parking tickets, then we'll be able to pay for some of this.
Oh, hello. It's amazing. We tried to figure out how we could enforce the fines and everything, and nobody will pay attention, so. Thank you all very much.
Okay, thank you.
So, Homer, I'm presuming that there's plenty of good justification for sending a Parking Control Officer up there on those fire lane parkings, from a safety perspective, so. I'll wait until he finishes. There is, yes, there is plenty of good reason to do that.
Homer, you might check to make absolutely certain that all of those have requested vehicle code enforcement within the boundaries of the private, because that's something that if it isn't there, then it can't be done. Is it, are all of them...
The area is private. It is signed by, with all the signs that say, "For the fire code, parking starts here, parking ends here, et cetera." But right when we moved in the community, I personally was calling a lot, and the Police Department said, "No, we don't go into a private community." I said, "Well, I'm standing in front of your sign, and I'm reading the code number, et cetera." And she said, "No, it's private, we don't go in there." So that's when I started to become active, and then I said, "Throw money at it." So I'd rather you guys make money.
I, I think one of the issues is whether or not the associations have asked for the vehicle code to be enforced. So that's your, that's your avenue of pursuit here?
Okay, very good. So requested?
Well, I think there's a process. The city manager can advise you on how to go about doing that.
Good. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you for staying so late to make that comment.
Oh, oh, sure, yeah, thank you.
And I have her telephone number, that's what I was trying to get from her, so we can contact her.
Okay, any other public comments? Okay, go on to Planning Commission Agenda and Oral Status Report. My favorite part of the meeting.
Thank you so much for that sentiment, Mayor. The Planning Commission last week only had one public hearing item, and that was a request by Shorehouse Cafe at Balboa Boulevard and Main Street. They wanted to expand by 95 square feet, just rearrange some storage area to provide some extra table space. Right now, they're non-conforming, they don't have a use permit, they also wanted use permit for live entertainment, use permit that would take care of a parking waiver for two parking spaces. The problem was, they've had a history with the Police Department, and largely based on the failure to respond after citations were issued, and a concern about any more parking waivers on the, down there on Peninsula, the Planning Commission denied unanimously, so we have not received an appeal yet.
That's just what I was going to ask. Okay, any questions? All right, next item is Continued Business, Item 20, or we did 27, so we'll go on to 28, Resolution Encouraging a Citywide 10% Voluntary Water Conservation.
Mr. Mayor, if council has any questions, Steve Mider is here, but do you want a staff report?
Um, I don't think we need one.
I know.
Do we need a staff report? Any questions, Mr. Mider? Councilwoman Gardner?
No, I just, this is well-done by staff, and I think that the more education we can do, we had a very good presentation at the Coastal Bay Water Quality Committee from Steve and his staff, and what could be looming is pretty scary. So the more we can do now on a voluntary basis, I think the better. I thank you for this, you did good work.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gardner.
How do we intend to communicate this to residents?
Actually, we have a, our outreach plan, first of all, we're, we have an ongoing program, we've had that for some time, but the goal with this, this resolution, will kind of help us, you know, heighten the awareness, and an opportunity to emphasize increased education and outreach through, first of all, we're modifying the municipal bill right now in terms of, it's important that our customers understand what their use was last year, so we're going to be modifying that this month. We're going to, there's bill inserts we're working on right now over the next six months, and of course, the first one already went out emphasizing conservation. We have a website right now, obviously, dedicated, we're updating that website to, we believe will provide a much more user-friendly look to it, and of course, it's a very easy name to remember, so we're con-- we're, we're kind of using that as an emphasis. Of all our outreach, we're trying to steer our customers to that website, we think that's the most efficient way. And of course, outreach to homeowner associations, we've done presentations, we'll continue to do that, and I think that's an excellent opportunity. And of course, a lot of our, a lot of our homeowner associations are large water users from a standpoint of irrigation, so it's, it's a, it's a great opportunity to work with them, and of course, we, we have been working with them recently in terms of educating them on how to better manage their water usage for irrigation. And finally, the cable TV network, we've had conservation-type shows, if you will, and we'll continue to do that, we have two more planned in the near future.
Thank you. Councilman Webb?
You mentioned the billing, are you going to really make it super clear by having a column for last year, a column for this year, and another column that says you're either up 10% or you're down 10%? So that, I mean, it, a lot of people won't pay any attention to it unless you, in big red letters, say, "Okay, guys, you didn't, you either made your goal or you didn't make your goal."
Uh, Councilmember Webb, we, the first phase of it is going to be simply providing what the last, actually, we're using an average of three years, every two-month cycle. It'll be fairly straightforward just to get the message out, and then we're have a, we're working on a more comprehensive and clear approach, which we hope to implement sometime shortly after the first of the year, but this is our first step. So that's our eventual goal. Eventual goal is actually create a graph and a very clear picture.
Something else to do is, I know it's hard to get to our renters, because many times they don't get the water bill. Maybe there could be a line on there to say, "If you're a landlord, let your tenant know," so we can try to get them to communicate, even if we don't.
That's an excellent suggestion, I will definitely take that back.
If there was a mandatory reduction in allocation, what's your perspective on what that might look like?
Oh, actually, that's the, part of the next steps in the staff report. There's, it's, right now, we're working on, I'm actually participating on a county-wide staff level, and with MODOC, our municipal water resource of Orange County, which provides imported water to all of Orange County. The allocation plan we're currently working on, on a, I want to say, joint-agency basis, is designed as a tool, a management tool, should mandatory allocations come. It will determine how the water would be allocated throughout the county on a fair basis, including Newport Beach. From there, and as far as how that's taking place, it really comes down to establishing a base, which every agency would essentially be, have a right to water to, and then they would go down to, from that standpoint, once a base is allocated, then you, that would determine what the regional water supply looks like over the next year, so it could be a reduction of 10%, 5%. So you establish a reduction based on base. And then, of course, the final part of the plan they're developing right now is essentially what the water would cost should allocations be exceeded by an agency. That is in draft stage right now, and it's currently proposed to be approved by their board in November. The city has a water conservation plan that was developed in 1991. It's essentially a tool to essentially do the same thing. Should allocations be required, essentially mandatory cutbacks, it divides a management tool to allocate that water throughout the city on what is a fair basis, at least that's what the ordinance would attempt to do. This ordinance was written in response in '92, the last time mandatory allocations were implemented in the city. The ordinance that's currently written is, is essentially not consistent with current policy. Staff is working on the update right now. Of course, we can't, we would be proposing these updates and presenting this to council in the next two months. It's critical that we wait for MODOC to finish their plan first, to essentially build our plan, to make sure it's consistent with current policy. The plan and, the conservation ordinance in place right now is just simply not, it just simply is unplayable.
Well, I would think that you'd need to pay careful attention to the baseline, because if you, if you use a baseline that is after a lot of voluntary reduction, and then you have a mandatory cutback from that baseline, then where do you go if you've already cut to the bone?
Right. And that's an essential, that's an essential component. In fact, a lot of time was spent with, working with Met and MODOC on a regional basis for that very reason, what's fair. And one of the things, that what they came up with on a county basis, and also throughout the region, is establishing a three-year history, an average, not including last year. So they went back from their proposing in 2004 to 2006, look at your average of all the demand, don't include last year, because last year was essentially, people were starting to conserve and to be more aware, so they thought that wouldn't be fair. Now, the city, in updating our ordinance, that's one option we will have, and of course, I will have available options for council to consider when we update our ordinance in the next two months.
Okay. Now, with Met and MODOC, and they, they also are looking to sign up new users, so it's not as if we save water that, you know, the planet gets some relief, it's that it's going to feed new users, so, I mean, how many new users do, does Met and MODOC sign up every year?
Councilman DeGale, what I would propose is, we have a, we'll, we'll have more presentations at council, because this is some, this is an important update, and of course, Metropolitan Water District was the second largest in the country at 18 million indirect and direct customers. I will be inviting one of their experts to probably more, essentially, address that question with much more accuracy. That's what their regional planning people have the expertise in, and they can answer that.
Is it true, though, that they, part of why they encourage conservation in, in built-up communities is they want to free up supply for newer communities?
Well, the, the message they're, they're telling us at the county level and the retail level is simply the, the reservoirs, Northern California, Colorado River, the Delta environmental ruling, the water supply just isn't there right now, and the weather patterns have been unpredictable. So that's really the message they're asking us to prepare for.
But you're right. I don't know about their, their policy, but yeah, I mean, we don't have a good water policy, because we do save, and we don't benefit the delta, we just build more houses. That isn't true.
What I, what I, what I will do, though, is, and I've already made this based on our follow-up from the Water Quality Committee, Water Bay Quality Committee meeting, is I have already asked Metropolitan to invite one of their water policy planning experts to come down and address, address the council to more adequately answer that question, because that's what, that's essentially their expertise.
Didn't you also say that we get a, from Met, we will have certain benefits because we have been saving? Wasn't there something in...
Yes, that's the, the allocation plan, and again, I will be doing more, more council workshops on this, but the allocation plan that's at the regional level, unlike '92, when they did a cross-the-board cut, say, 10%, this time, they're looking at every agency, and the goal is to be fair in terms of have agencies taking measures to be less dependent on imported water over the last 15 years. They have, you start at 10%, but they might get a credit back, say, 2%, so it might be 8%. Have they taken efforts and invested money in becoming less, essentially less dependent on imported water from the standpoint of they found other supplies, constructed wells? All that will be considered in developing what each agency at retail level would be cut back. So it's not a cross-the-board 10%, and this allocation plan has a lot more, it's a fairly complicated formula, but that's essentially the outcome.
And Orange County has a very good record related to the groundwater development project, recycling project, and we are going to get some benefit from that.
Absolutely. And also, the city has done an excellent job since '92. At that time, we were 100% dependent on imported water. On average today, we are essentially, our dependence on imported water is down to about 1/3. So we have cut back imported water dependency in terms of about 67% on average. And of course, that will reflect in our, our overall cutbacks, when we were asked mandatory, would greatly benefit us, actually.
Okay, any other questions? Is there a motion?
Move the action.
Does anyone in the public want to speak on this? Seeing no one, go ahead.
Move the action.
Please vote. Please vote.
Motion carries.
Is your TV broken tonight? Is that why?
Waiting for him to get up and say something.
Yeah, you're running out of time, we only got one more thing here, so, you better make it good.
Okay, last, last part of our agenda is Current Business, item twenty-nine, Amendments to City Policy D1, Media Relations.
Tara has waited patiently in the audience tonight for this last item, and I made it a discussion item, just because it has been discussed quite a bit at the council committee level, and I wanted to make sure that all of council had that opportunity.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The policy before you this evening is merely an expansion of your current policy, D1, the media relations policy. Many of the items contained in this draft are things we've already been doing here at the city that we felt needed a little further clarification, and a few are new additions that were recommended by the Media and Communications Committee members, and actually, we also looked at other cities' policies and see what they were doing, and tried to incorporate some of their ideas into the draft you have tonight. If approved, a new policy would serve as an enhanced resource for staff and other city representatives to use when dealing with the media. The changes included Attachment A, an updated purpose statement, a revised Section A of your policy that more clearly defines what city representatives are authorized to speak to the news media, a revised and expanded Section B to provide clearer procedures for releasing information to the media, and a brand-new Section C that we added to provide more direction and guidelines for handling certain special circumstances, such as dealing with litigation or employee issues, general or routine media requests, city-initiated media contacts and errors in reporting. The city attorney's office, and again, the Media and Communications Committee did review and approve the policy. That concludes my report, if you have any questions, I'm available to answer them.
Any questions, Tara?
Move the item.
Okay, any comments from the public? Seeing none, please vote.
Motion carries.
Homer, do you know when we'll be coming back with the Buck Gully ordinance?
No, I don't know, it depends upon the geologist.
Okay.
Okay, motion for reconsideration, Madam Clerk?
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Okay, any motion for reconsiderations? Okay, seeing none, I'd like to adjourn the meeting this evening in honor of retired Building Inspector Don Skelly. It's always sad when a member of our city family passes away. Don Skelly is a building inspector who retired in two thousand after working for fifteen years in the Building Department, lost a long battle with cancer, and passed away on Sunday, October the fifth. He held several positions before becoming a senior commercial inspector, he worked on several high-profile projects in the city, he was well-known and liked not only in the Building Department, but citywide by those that knew him. He is survived by his wife Judy, his mother, his brother, and two sons, and our condolences go out to his family. With that, we're adjourned.